Where's Mayor Pro Tem?
Charlie can talk into somebody. Sometimes I see Mark like pop up out of the chair. I'm so happy for him.
You are. All right, ready to go. Good evening, everybody. Like to call to order the regular meeting of the Superior Town Council for Monday, June 9th, 2025. Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public of Wichita, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Shannon.
Mayor Mark Laces.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jason Serbu.
Here.
Councilmember Jen Cowish.
Here.
Councilmember Stephanie Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Neil Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Foster.
Here.
Councilmember Heather Craycraft.
Here.
Town manager Matt Magley.
Here.
Town attorney Nicholas Hartman.
Here.
All right, up next is item 3C, which is approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes that any council member would like to make to the agenda? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve. So move. All right, we got a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Serbu. Second from Mayor Laces. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Serbu.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowish.
Yes.
Councilmember Craycraft.
Yes.
Councilmember Foster.
Yes.
Mayor Laces.
Yes. All right, up next is item 3D, which is our council reports. Who would like to go first?
I'll go.
Thank you.
Just a few things this evening. First and foremost, I want to congratulate Jen on receiving the Heather Craycraft Superior Achiever Award at this year's Chamber of Commerce Awards. She does so much for our community and really fires survivors everywhere. One thing that was mentioned when she's being recognized, but because of her efforts going to Washington, legislation was passed to be able to not be charged on your insurance proceeds. So if you lost your home in the fire, now when you get your proceeds, you are not taxed on that as income, which is huge and making it that much easier for people to come home. So that and everything else you do, thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Jason and I met with some local businesses this week. And just a reminder to everybody, please support our local businesses and shop local. I know it's very easy to shop online these days, but put down the mouse, get out of the house, and please support our local businesses. Not only are you helping to support mom and pops that are helping to support our community, but you're also supporting your tax base, which then funds everything that we pay for to make sure that our community is thriving and all the things that you enjoy living here because of. So again, just trying to get the word out there, make sure you're shopping local. And then one last thing, and I'll bring it up as an agenda item for our upcoming work session, but just wanted to get on everybody's radar to think about some street art. And I know Jason's probably gonna sneer at this, but underpasses, it helps add safety because it creates a sense of place and people actually want to go there because of the street art. And we see a beautiful example of that here just behind Town Hall. And in addition to that, looking at some opportunities around downtown or our shopping centers to create a sense of place in addition to activating those areas. Basically, like if you're going to shop for a home instead of one that's blank, you know, one that's staged typically gets some more people to go to it. So we'll talk about that at a work session, but just wanted to get that on everybody's radar. That's it for me.
Thanks, Stephanie. Who's next? Neil, you ready? Nobody's chomping at the bit to speak tonight.
I can go. Let me fill the void. The only update I have for the community and the council relates to the Rocky Mountain Airport, their Part 150 study. As everyone should recall, back in March, the airport released their plans as it related to representation for those affected areas. They broke the airport influence zones into six different zones. And Superior is supposed to have a single representative in both Zone 1 and Zone 6. There's a call for interested applicants, and at this point, I can find no disclosures on who was selected from Superior. I know our planning director is participating, but I don't know in what capacity. Is she a representative for Superior or is she providing supportive staff? Further, I've come to understand that the meetings for this Part 150 will not be public meetings. So obviously, this flies in the face of Cora. And while Cora does have an allowance for where secrecy is required per federal law, the FAA's on the website describes Part 150 process. Describing the Part 150 process highlights the need for transparency and openness. So Matt, I'd like to ensure that you're able to follow up with Jefferson County and ensure that their meetings are noticed and properly open to the public per Colorado law. I'm optimistic that this is a misunderstanding of some sort and given the inimportance of this process, that this be done in an open and transparent manner. That's it for me.
Thanks, Neil. Who's next? Heather.
Thank you. Wanted to echo what, excuse me, councilmember Miller said about the Superior Chamber of Commerce Awards Dinner. This year, it was an awards reception. And just wanted to give kudos to the chamber and all of the volunteers that are business owners. That event was spectacular. The energy was fantastic. And if you didn't know, Sports City will can host a pretty great party upstairs. So thank you to them for including so many wonderful businesses and so many business owners that were there. I also wanted to say congratulations. Many of us were at the Studio Pilates grand opening, which is in downtown Superior. They hosted a fantastic open house and gave everyone an opportunity to kind of see what they specialize in, and their staff is fantastic. So congratulations to them on opening. And if you're looking for a new workout spot, definitely ask Jason how it goes because he's gonna test it out and tell us. Also wanted to point out a reminder for those who were affected by the wildfire. Boulder County Wildfire Fund is setting the deadline of June 30th for the Housing Support Program applications that will be closed, which they've aligned with many of the other announced closures of the fund rebuild grant process. So just wanted to point that out. And if you needed help, obviously, we have the best staff here helping with any issues we have with our rebuild or processing of applications. Lastly, I got an opportunity to walk the Coal Creek Corridor in Original Town with Tracy Bane and Peter Rubrik, and I just wanted to say thank you. They are two of the wonderful volunteers. Many of you are sitting in this room as well that really take care of our committees and commissions and seeing them in their element, whether it's being, you know, in charge of kind of the wildlife preserve or the birds really was an honor. And talking about restoration and things we can do to further that project was my pleasure. I know Jen wanted to join us, but had too much work. So we'll talk more about that in the future, but that was my update.
Thank you, Heather. Mike, nothing from you? Jen? All right.
Go for it.
So usually, there's like five people here and they get to listen to us. And so this isn't usually this long, but I do have quite a few things I wanted to acknowledge and just normalize that we're talking about it in the community after this week. It's been a tough week for the community. So I ended the month in May with a Boulder recognition ceremony of the location of the first same-sex marriage license issued at this historic Boulder courthouse. That was news to me. I didn't know that that was where that was issued. So it was pretty amazing. There was actually a proposal there after the ceremony, which was very sweet. And I like to say, I hate marriage, but I love love, you know? And my husband loves it when I say that. So. And the city raised the pride flag and Marty Moore from the Rocky Mountain Equality reminded us that sometimes we have to fight for joy because we deserve it. There's so many things going on, and it's very easy to put that off. And so building that into your life, super important for mental health and... Oh, there's kids somewhere. So two days later, on the way to a pride event in Longmont, I got the news of the attack in Boulder. And the event that I was going to was honoring Representative Kyle Brown for his work and enshrining healthcare for trans people, which is an amazing thing to do right now in these times. But the event was also somber, not the celebration, I think, that, you know, everybody was planning on because we were all processing the reality of what happened in real time together. So the next day, I attended a vigil to honor the members of Run For Your Lives, the group that was attacked. And there were many of our local and state leaders, as well as several interfaith leaders. And I was just really glad to see this because, you know, in times like this, it's easy for people who are hurting to go to their corners and dig deep further into division. I just want to say that I'm so sorry for the Jewish community and the business community in Boulder who lost what to them felt like a safe space. And I'm really grateful for the JCC and the work that they always do in this community. They were there for us in the fire recovery in such a big way. But I was very happy for the Jewish community that they had a home to go to, to gather in this recovery together. But I also want to, you know, in addition to that, holding space for the Jewish community so heavily impacted, I want to remind people that the Muslim community and Middle East community was bracing for impact despite denouncing the attacker and his actions. I have no desire to take away from the focus on the Jewish community, but I also want to note that if you have Muslim or Arab friends, to just check on them and know that they're holding space for this as well. While sometimes unintended, this kind of action can cause hate to be directed at the Arab community and just like the fight against antisemitism, they deserve belonging to. So I'm hopeful to see some unity, community events, engagements with the local synagogues and the Islamic Center of Boulder. And I just, I really think that we have to address this together, and it can't be something that's done separately. And a huge thank you to some of our Superior residents who are spearheading this effort to unite and call for peace. And a very big, that you're here in person is wonderful, to say thank you to our first responders and all of the people who are focused on safety in our communities in an event like this. So just really grateful for you. Your turn. I also want to thank the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors for the amazing event and honoring our local businesses and the annual Chamber Awards. I appreciate all the effort that goes into creating this event, as well as the thoughtful planning around the awards. I tend to be somebody who gets the job done and don't really like look at what I did or take a moment to just honor the work. And this board is there to do that for our local businesses. And I'm just, I'm really grateful to have received the award and the kindness that came from them. It's a special feat that they do that. I also attended the Boulder Dems Champions of Democracy Dinner. We were able to hear from several speakers on what's going on in politics today while uplifting in somewhat of a we have to keep fighting message. I could feel the exhaustion from the Boulder County leaders just overall. It's been a, it's been a heavy week. And I think for them, the world feels heavy and there doesn't seem to be an end in sight. So it feels like a good time to remind everybody that we're all just one person trying to do all the things that the world's asked us to do before all these heavy moments were happening. And so just have some patience and go easy on yourself. While this council doesn't do business in the federal government, I do want to share a newly arising concern. And I don't bring this up to scare anyone or make it, you know, incite any major concerns. It's more to wrap our arms around our community right now. But it's come to my attention that while ICE isn't here, the fear of ICE is very real here and that there are some businesses in Superior and around Superior being impacted where people that are legally allowed to be here are leaving because they're just, they're scared to be here. And so, you know, I've reached out to Boulder County about getting information on immigrant rights, and I'll be working with the chamber and the businesses directly to ensure that people have information and they know how to respond. But it doesn't feel anywhere near enough. And so I'm looking for, you know, if anybody has connections or resources and support systems, please feel free to connect with me on that. So I think that's it. And that is probably the longest board report I've ever done. So thanks.
Thank you, Jen. Jason?
Yeah, excuse me. I do also want to say that Studio Pilates was an amazing opening. My daughter and I have this thing where we do dad and daughter cocktails. So we made an agreement that we will go to Pilates beforehand, but there will be no photographs because I don't want to see myself crying on any social media posts. Yeah, of course you do. But, you know, meeting the owner, Sarah Unbach, please, if you guys want to try Pilates, she is fantastic. She was very, very supportive of the Chamber of Commerce, of the council. She was at Jen's words ceremony. She's a fantastic person. So if you haven't tried Pilates, join me and give it a shot. If you have tried it, try it again. She's fantastic. Maybe a heartwarming note, it's about two months ago, Councilmember Mike Foster and I rescued a gosling, which is a baby geese, from a storm chamber. And I keep getting photographs from Superior resident Jamie Dixon. She is a wildlife enthusiast and she's a fantastic just advocate for the wildlife in the area. And I just keep getting these pictures. And this morning, I got a picture of Lucky and he's almost full grown and I can't tell what it looked like. And it's just, it's really neat seeing that, you know, how the community really rallies around the wildlife we have in the area. So that was kind of cool to see that. So thank you, Mike, for helping with that. Jen, June 20th is Monte Carlo Night for the senior sect in Superior, and that's 45 and up. And if you haven't seen my post on the Superior community page yet, there's still time to register right now. According to Michaela, we have over 50 people registered for the event, and it's going to be a free event. There is no charge. It's going to be poker, blackjack, roulette, and baccarat. If anybody wants to give that a shot, please sign up. It's black tie optional, so you don't have to come in a tuxedo, but if you want to dress up, put a good suit on, kind of feel like James Bond a little bit, please join us for that. It's gonna be an amazing event. It's Friday, June 20th, from 5:00 until 8:30 PM. We have professional dealers there, tables, there's food and beverages available to purchase, but there is no cost to play the games, but you must register for the event. My god, my eyesight's getting bad. And I guess last but not least, and certainly not least, Mark and I attended the antisemitism summit, mayor summit, this morning in Boulder at the University of Colorado. Mayor Aaron Brockett, the mayor of Boulder, set this up, and it was a real eye awakening thing. You know, I'm from New York. I grew up in an area that was heavily Jewish with the Jewish community. So I feel like I've been more or less kind of imbued in that culture and have a lot of understanding of the culture. But it was, it was great to see even more in depth of what, you know, what's going on with the Jewish community now. There is a massive rise in antisemitism right now. That needs to be addressed from not just leaders, but community members and everyone. And I'll let Mark talk more about it. I don't want to take all the oxygen up on this one, but the most important thing that I took away from this today was antisemitism does not occur in a vacuum. It doesn't just naturally is caused, it is caused by repeated antisemitic comments that are not challenged, that aren't, you know, called, called to task. And, you know, I thought, what way do we do this? How do we, how do we combat this when we see this on a daily basis? And I'm thinking, rather than calling somebody out or yelling at them, or maybe, maybe the issue is we just say, where did that come from? You know, is there a place that you just don't understand the issue you're talking about? And maybe say, and I'm not preaching, forgive me for this, but I'm saying, could it be something where you say, hey, could I give you five minutes of my time? Could I explain what this community means to me and the admiration and the support and the joy and the compassion and the beauty and the love I felt from this community? Can I explain what that means to me? Can I share that with you? And maybe it'll change their mind, maybe it won't. But maybe that one little kernel of thought might change something when they see something else, and they'll start going on a different path towards healing and starting looking at people as human. Because the problem is when we run people down, we stop looking at them as human beings. And it's so, so easy to hate a subgroup that's not like you because you feel like they're so different. But at the end of the day, if you learn so much more about these different cultures, these different peoples, you'll find that you can't hate them because at the end of the day, they're just like you and I. They have the same fallibility, they have the same issues, the stresses. And the more we learn about each other, you know, the better our community is going to be. Superior has been a fantastic community for fighting this. But, you know, at the end of the day, just talk to each other, just a simple conversation. It doesn't have to be a fight. Just let's communicate a little bit better with our fellow man and women and just get to know people from a better basis and just reading into stereotypes. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Jason. Stephanie, round two.
Sorry, yes, I apologize. Just a couple more quick things. One, I want to remind everybody about our first official summer market since the last one was canceled because of weather. So that's going to be this Wednesday, starting at 5:00, is that correct? So there's going to be music and all kinds of events, local vendors. So again, you know, helping to support our local businesses. And it's also going to be our new Civic Space grand opening. So please come out for that. It should be a really, really fun event. So that's just downtown Superior here this Wednesday at 5:00.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. That's right, because it's only Monday. Next Wednesday, I apologize, the 18th. So next Wednesday, please come to that because it should be really, really great. And then because everybody's talking about Studio Pilates, and that was a great ribbon crating, just so everybody knows, they're running a special right now where you get seven sessions for $60. So if you want to give it a go, then please check it out. That's it for me. Join us.
Thanks for that, Stephanie. Good evening, everybody. Good to see you all. I wanted to just give my thoughts on what occurred in Boulder last week. So as our community continues to reel from the violence and the, from the violence and the terror attack that occurred on the Pearl Street Mall last week, I just wanted to provide some thoughts. So one year ago, this council came together to issue a strong and unequivocal condemnation of hate speech and antisemitism that occurred here in Superior. I remain incredibly proud of this council for doing so. That was a bright moment for Superior in an otherwise dark time. We came together to denounce antisemitism, full stop. Unfortunately, acts of antisemitism, violence, and terror are continuing, and I continue to stand in solidarity with the Jewish community, which was impacted by this heinous and cowardly attack. Antisemitism should be condemned whenever we see it, whether here in Superior, in Boulder County, or anywhere. And let there be no doubt that the hate crime which occurred in Boulder on the Pearl Street Mall was not an act expressing political protest. This was a targeted attack against Jews here in Boulder County. It was an antisemitic hate crime directed against peaceful elderly protesters and should be universally condemned. I pray for those Jewish community members who were injured in this attack, and I pray for their full and complete recovery. I give my thanks to the first responders who responded to prevent that attack from getting worse. To that end, as Mayor Pro Tem Serbu mentioned this morning, all day, we were at the Boulder Emergency Summit that was convened by Mayor Brockett in partnership with Combat Antisemitism Movement. And it was a meeting of mayors, council members, state representatives, not just from here in Colorado, but we had the delegation from Kansas, from Nebraska, and Oklahoma as well who came to Colorado to talk about rising antisemitism, issues in their communities, community responses, ways for us to deal with it. The rise in antisemitism following October 7th, obviously, the response to the crime that occurred just last week here in Boulder County. And we were joined by the Anti-Defamation League, Stop Antisemitism Colorado, the Confronting Antisemitism Movement, as well as other organizations and several first responders. Really important issue, I want everybody to just, you know, make sure that this stays top of mind, stand in solidarity with victims of hate speech, antisemitism, whenever you see it. This is one of those things that the only way to stamp it out is to condemn it when we see it. We can't just turn a blind eye and ignore it. We need to recognize it for what it is. It's repulsive, it doesn't belong in our community, and it needs to be rejected when we see it. So that's what I have, and I'll turn it over now to manager Magley.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder of our work session on Monday. If you can get me your topics, if you have any that you'd like to discuss so we can get the agenda out this week, that would be appreciated. That's it.
Town attorney.
Nothing here.
All right, and town clerk. Okay. We are moving on to our public comment section of the evening. This is public comment on our consent agenda, presentations, and non-agenda items. If you're here, we have two land use applications that are on our agenda for tonight. First, rezoning application for lots 1 through 6, Block Q in Original Town, and then the open space rezoning for the Town 15 properties. If you're here to speak on any of those items, we ask that you hold your public comment until we reach those items on our agenda so they can be included in the matter of the public record for that issue. Otherwise, if you're interested in making public comment on our consent agenda, any of our presentations or our non-agenda items, we've got a sign-in sheet here at the desk. If you can give your first and last name and the city in which you reside, we will recognize you for public comment for five minutes per person. And if you're participating via Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature, and we will call on you in the order in which we see your hand raised. First up is Kara Noisy.
Good evening, I'm Kara Noisy. I'm a resident of the town of Superior. I'm also chair for the Open Space Advisory Committee. I'm making a quick comment now because I can't stay much longer. We have other teammates who will be chiming in. But I wanted to let you know that we are thrilled that you have Town 15 on your agenda for consideration this evening in terms of rezoning. Our OSAC team is comprised of members that the town board and the town council appointed. And for over 10 years, it's been our documented recommendation to town council to rezone Town 15 as open space natural. Town 15 and its undevelopment has become a vital open space. Rezoning it as open space will complete the full stretch of open space that exists from Autry Park through Community Park and on into Boulder County open space. And we update a document every year with a prioritaries listing of target opportunities, if you will, for open spaces. And Town 15 is always tops on that list. And we encourage you to read that document so you can recognize all of the areas that we are considering. In 2021, our Town Pro stacks master plan was published, and it included the input of over 400 households asking Town 15 to remain either as is, or if there were to be any development, to keep it as an open space recreational concept. We would only ask as an OSAC committee to participate with perhaps conditions for an open space rezoning as recreational. So this whole topic that you're going to discuss tonight is aligned exactly with OSAC's position and the 2021 Pro Stack Master Plan. The Planning Commission will tell you about their hesitancy to rezone until they've completed the new comprehensive plan, which kind of makes sense. But OSAC disagrees because we think this is exactly the right time. Because when you look at the current comprehensive plan that dates back to 2012, and then you consider all of the times that this parcel of land has come up for potential development, each time, public engagement has come out and hundreds of residents have denounced development. So to write a comprehensive plan for 2025 that doesn't include all of that input, it dismisses the voices of hundreds of residents that have been talking to you for over 10 years. Now, during our April open space meeting with you, OSAC was told that when it comes to Town 15, we haven't been making enough noise. I actually had to go back and listen to make sure that I got that right. And Mayor, you sent me an email saying that it's your experience that the squeaky wheel gets the grease. And to be clear, OSAC is not an activist committee. We give you our recommendations on how to acquire and preserve open space, wildlife, and habitat. That being said, the Planning Commission has conducted several public engagements, last one on Thursday, lots of residents have participated. And there is a petition, I'm sure you'll hear about it, of over 300 residents who have their names on it to rezone. So it seems to me that that's a lot of squeaky wheels. It will not cost this town a thing to rezone. The Planning Commission might tell you that we're going to lose $30 million to rezone, and that's pure speculation on how much that parcel could be purchased and sold for development. It's also further speculation on how much revenue that parcel of land could generate. We're all looking at downtown Superior on that model. Once developed, you don't get open space back, you just don't. And buildings with little patches of grass outside of them are not open space. My understanding is that the town can rezone Town 15 now. And if in the future, if there is a viable need for development, you can rezone back. It would just be a ballot measure, and maybe that's not such a bad thing. But to decide to wait on rezoning, it's somewhat insulting. So we encourage you not to kick this can. So when you asked us to make more noise, I'm hoping you weren't serious. And we just really appreciate your time and the opportunity to speak about open space opportunities. And not mentioned in the board update, I just wanted to let you all know, we had an amazing National Trails Day on Saturday. Well over 200 people were there. We had eagles soaring. We had a baby goat that was no kidding born right there on site. We had horse-drawn wagons, we had boos, we had reptiles, sweet cow ice cream. Like I said, well over 200 people, and we encourage you to come next year. It's always the first Saturday in June. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm just going to ask everybody to refrain from applauding. We've got a lot of people here in the room, and just to move it along. All right, next up. Thank you. Thank you.
It's on Town 15, but I have to go, so I think you all know where I sit.
Richard Y. Grace Y.
Same as well.
Jeff Cody, on behalf of Chris and Cheek.
Yes, I'll be holding my comments until later.
Stephanie Hirschfield.
Town 15.
Cheryl Fay.
Town 15, but I have to go with the kids, so can I?
We'll make an exception for the kids.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Fay, and I've lived here for 19 years. I'm very much hoping that the board will reconsider rezoning to Town 15, of course, to recreation and open space. And there are many people not on Andrew Drive that I've talked to that feel very similar, and they are not able to be here due to work and travel. So would it, this is a question to you all, but would it be helpful for us to get, for me, to get names and addresses and signatures to help explain the need and the desire to keep this, to rezone? Is that something I can do?
Yeah, we typically don't go back and forth during public comment, but you're welcome to do whatever you want to do.
Okay. All right. Thank you for reconsidering it.
Hello, everyone. Nice to see you all this evening. I am not here to talk about Town 15. I actually did want to talk a little bit about the comprehensive planning process and concerns I have about the process we're using. We have had one public meeting where the residents could actually come together and talk about some of the data that we have gathered for the comprehensive plan. That occurred last Thursday night. We've had some talking sessions, but everything we've been doing right now is by survey. From my experience, when we are looking at things we want to do in town, it is most successful when we get our residents in a room and we have a dialogue. I've been a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and the best way we developed parks and parcels is we brought folks together and we had a dialogue about what the various topics were that were happening. My understanding is there were discussions that happened on Thursday night. However, the problem is, I, for one, was sick as a dog and could not be at that meeting. And so my request of the town and the Planning Commission and our planning staff is, we need to have more face-to-face meetings on our comprehensive plan. When it happened in 2012, I went to just about every meeting that occurred, and there were multiple meetings, and I had an opportunity to hear what other people were thinking. So I really want to encourage the town board to press our staff and to press the Planning Commission that we have more face-to-face opportunities where we can engage in dialogue. We are not making a comprehensive plan by survey. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Michael Hirschfeld, resident of Superior. I want to thank the Boulder County Sheriff's Office for their quick response on June 1st in Boulder concerning the targeted terror attack, along with their oversight of Sunday's Jewish festival. The community appreciates your attentiveness to this and all matters, so thank you again.
All right. Anybody on Zoom like to give public comment on any matters not on the land use applications? Brad Walker? I see your name on Zoom, Brad, but we can't hear you. Can't see you either. All right, why don't we see if there's anybody else on Zoom who'd like to give public comment? Anybody else on Zoom like to give public comment? All right, I see Brad with his hand raised again. Let's try it again. Still not seeing or hearing you? We'll try again next time. All right, anybody else on Zoom? All right, seeing none, public comment is closed, and we're going to move on to item four, which is our presentation section of the evening, and we've got a presentation from the Boulder County Coresponder Program.
Megan Grimes.
Oh, was that Brad?
Yes, sir.
All right, Brad. Recognize the public comment.
Thank you for the exception and accommodation with the technical difficulty. I was listening to the comments tonight, and they were all very poignant. I think the takeaway from everyone's comment about the tragedy that happened up in Boulder was words do matter. And I think that we need to think about that because they actually do matter. In regards to Neil Shaw's comment about the Park 51, basically what he's implying is the airport is not following the law. And in that regard, I think that is a situation for Mr. Hartman or Mr. Barr to address. And I think his words continue to show that when it comes to the airport, the airport will never have a fair shake when it comes to town council members. So I think it's worthwhile to take a moment and think about what was said earlier by council members and others, that words do matter. And I appreciate Mr. Shaw letting me know that I can communicate to others that the implication is the airport is not following the rules. And that's good to know, where we all stand. So I'm grateful to the board for taking my comments, and you folks have a great evening.
Thank you for your comments. All right, now we're moving on to item four, which is our presentation section of the evening. We've got a presentation from the Boulder County Coresponder Program. We've got Molly McDonald and Megan Grimes.
Thanks, Mayor. Megan and Molly are here with us tonight. Megan's our wonderful coresponder who's assigned to Superior. Thank you for coming.
Nope. Nope, he showed me, and I did it wrong immediately. Ah ha! No, stop it. There it is, okay. Like I said, I'm Megan Grimes. I'm the coresponder here in Superior. This is my supervisor, Molly McDonald, also the coresponder that used to be in Superior. So definitely, this town is near and dear to our heart, but I will be quick because there's lots of people here who also want to speak. But just wanted to give an update on the program and what's going on. That moves very quickly. So our team's grown quite a bit. We started with three, and now we're up to 14 coresponders across Boulder County. We cover Louisville, BCSO, Erie, Lafayette, and Louisville? I said Louisville already. And we're also really excited that we're adding a position at the courthouse, so we will be adding another role. So for those who are unfamiliar with co-response, we're mental health care providers that go out with our law enforcement partners on behavioral health and substance use concerns. We do a lot of support on scene, crisis counseling, suicide prevention and assessment, conflict resolution, grief and loss support, substance abuse and support intervention, housing crisis, connection referrals, and just some basic needs in general. I would also add parenting to that list as well. Our program goals are basically to have less involvement with the criminal justice system and decrease hospitalization, access to services, making sure that our law enforcement partners are not being asked to step out of their scope, and so that they can be more efficient and we can support them on scenes as well for those mental health concerns. We're cost-saving to our community, and we want to make sure that we always give trauma-informed care and just always try to come at our community members with understanding and empathy, which is obviously really needed right now. So our data from our team in 2024 across Boulder County, we responded to 3,506 calls for service. And as you can see, we've just increased every year. That's due to a lot of increase in team size and things like that. Superior, we've also seen a growth in call volume, ending last year with 184 calls. This quarter, we have now seen over 36 calls for service, which is up from last year as well. And there's a lot of components that kind of go into that. We have a larger team, so we do a lot of cross-coverage across all of our jurisdictions that we cover. We have extended our hours. I work now from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM. We used to end at 8:00. So just being able to respond to calls for service at a later time has been really helpful for community members as well. Kind of some of our goals are to kind of continue growth of our team, and then allowing us to kind of, I guess, speak to community members and make sure that they're aware of our program so that we can be of service to those who need it most. In Superior alone, like I said, last year, 184 calls, and our top calls are going to be mental health, parenting, and domestic violence. That's for various reasons, but that's kind of the trends that we see here in Superior. Some of our objectives is to increase our staffing and coverage. We're looking at hopefully maybe adding another position that would allow for early morning coverage in Superior. Like I said, I come in at noon. So, and then continued partnership with our law enforcement and fire agencies. We really love working with both of these partners on scenes. And then learning specific needs. Something that's really cool in Boulder County is we wanted to make sure that programs are going to fit the needs of community, and so we've implemented our larger team, something called the CAT team, which is the Community Assistance and Treatment Team. So they don't need law enforcement involvement to become involved with people in the community. So whereas myself and my other coresponders do respond with law enforcement, it's a little bit higher, kind of maybe risky situations, things like that, they're able to go out in pairs and kind of meet at a different level of need. And then the Wellmind team also is going to be the connection to mental health resourcing and help them connect to the right therapist or treatment provider. And that's pretty much all I have, unless there's questions from you all on the council.
Mike, did you have a question?
Well, first of all, thank you for all the work that you do. This is a tremendous resource for the community, and I really hope that we can continue to support this into the future. The growth in the number of calls has grown by a factor of three, or more than three in the last three years, and I'm really great to see that you're continuing to add staff and expand, looking to extend hours and things like this. And I'm curious how your next three- to five-year window looks and what your plans are for continuing to make sure that we're ready for the future.
Yeah, great question. I think also looking at numbers, Erie is in their fifth year, right? You all are finishing your fourth year of programming. I was here for the first two. And Erie last year had a 61% in call volume increase. That comes with credibility of the programming. We're hiring really talented therapists as well, and so we hope to continue to see growth in the next three to five years, I think, continue on this trajectory. A big thing for our team is sustainable funding. Of the 14 positions, there's nine different funding sources, you all being one of them, that I oversee and manage grant-wise and things like that. Most of our funding from grants is through state, but it is always year-to-year, things like that. The Behavioral Health Administration is who oversees our data and comes up with all these nice numbers for us. But sustainability and funding, and that's part of Megan spoke to the CAT and Wellmind teams. So Boulder County is looking at creating this crisis continuum of care. So those are meetings that I'm often in of, how do we make sure it's not just when people are calling 911 and they're, they don't know what to do or who to call, that we're accessing resources? How can we try to be preventative and get people access to services earlier on in whatever mental health, behavioral health, or substance use might be going on for that person? So we partner really well with them. Even last week, Megan connected a community member with the CAT team after having numerous law enforcement contacts, and the community member texted later saying, "I think this is going to change my life." And so the partnership between these three teams, I think, is huge. And Boulder County is also thinking and talking about a behavioral health tax. So that might be something in the next three to five years that we're looking at, which we're doing the groundwork now to understand what is behavioral health in the larger Boulder County scale, as well as in each of these individual communities, knowing that payment for this service comes in many different forms.
Thank you, Molly and Megan, for the presentation and for the service to the community over the past several years. One question that I have is just for educating the public in terms of accessing the services through the Coresponder Program. What's the best way for members of the public who need access to the coresponder to get those services? Is it a call to 911? Is it a call to the non-emergency number? Is it something that the individuals who are calling kind of need to know to ask for? Is it something that is a decision made by dispatch, by your office? Like, how do we actually connect versus getting contacted by law enforcement? I know that one of the points of the Coresponder Program is, you know, to avoid the burden on law enforcement, but also the perceived severity of a visit from law enforcement and some of these more sensitive matters that don't necessitate the need for armed officers to show up?
Yeah, that's a great question. So yes, to kind of like a lot of what you said, you can always call, if it's not an emergency, the non-emergent dispatch and ask for one of us to be paged. My phone makes a really obnoxious noise, and it will give the community member's number and like maybe a little brief synopsis of why they like want to reach out. My information, I'm happy to as well, like, send me an email if you're concerned about another member of the community or yourself, or you want to get resourced, things like that. And I think that's exactly what Molly was talking about with that continuation of care. If we're not needing law enforcement involvement, definitely getting as well-connected with CAT and the Wellmind team. I also have a really great connection with the community center, and I've been called there directly just to kind of check in on people. So there's definitely ways to kind of touch base with us. But yes, technically, the best way, if you wanted to talk to one of us right now, would be calling non-emergent dispatch and asking for one of us. But then obviously, if you need law enforcement involvement, we will go out with our partners. And if you do call 911 and would like a mental health clinician to partner with them, you can request one of us to respond with them. Did I miss anything? I'm sure I did. The only thing, this email here is also a great place to contact. It goes to every one of us on our team. And then I would also say a big push that we, and Megan was instrumental in helping us this year, is we're now 365. So we have coresponders on every day, even holidays, New Year's, Christmas. There's access to coresponders, and we kind of share that amongst the four agencies, which I think is I think is really beneficial to the community as well. So there's, we like the idea of like, there's no wrong door to contact us. Yeah, giving out our, our emails, the general one, and also that non-emergent number.
Thank you.
Meghan, Molly, thank you very much. Your services are so direly in need. And sadly, I think in the next coming years, you guys are going to be needed so much more given the current climate of things. But maybe for a feel-good story, do you, can you kind of regale us with an instance where your services have provided a success story, whereas traditional law enforcement involvement, where checking on individuals may not have gone as well?
Um, yeah, absolutely. So we had a community member who actually had families here, and he was brought in from a different state. And he unfortunately had a pretty severe diagnosis of schizophrenia, paranoid schizophrenia to be specific. And he was unfortunately unmedicated, came from a different state, getting him signed up for the right resources, things like that. What is really nice, I think, with partnering with law enforcement, because he did have some concerns around some of his behavior in the past with aggression and things like that, is making sure for our safety. But really, being able to work with them, and we were able to get him on an M1 hold, which is a psychiatric hold, through the Crisis Center, was able to talk him into the Crisis Center. M1 was written, he was hospitalized, and last I heard, he was at a long-term stabilization program where he can stay for up to a year, be medicated, be monitored. And they use that kind of time, it's almost like sober living, but more mental health-based. But they use that time to establish a job, get all their documents in place, things like that. So as of the last time I heard from mom, he's still in that program and he's still being successful with otherwise. I know in a different state, it ended up in a big, being arrested and charges and things like that, which is definitely what we were trying to avoid this time.
Great, that's great to hear. Thank you.
Any additional questions from council? All right, well, thank you both for serving the community and for this presentation tonight.
Yeah, thank you. I don't know. I don't want to mess it up.
All right, we are moving on. Item number five is our project updates. We have none, so we're moving on to our consent agenda, which is item six. We have two proclamations tonight, a proclamation of Juneteenth and a proclamation for our outgoing advisory committee member. Anybody want to read the Juneteenth proclamation? I'll read it. Whereas, Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, commemorates the end of slavery in the United States and celebrates the spirit of resilience and determination of Black Americans who have overcome centuries of oppression and discrimination to shape our nation's history and culture. Whereas on June 19th, 1865, Union General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas to announce the end of the Civil War and the abolition of slavery, marking a pivotal moment in the fight for freedom and equality for African-Americans. Whereas Juneteenth has been recognized as a state holiday in Colorado since 2022, and its observance offers an opportunity to reflect on the outgoing, on the ongoing struggle for racial justice and to celebrate the contributions and achievements of the Black community. Whereas, the Juneteenth holiday in Colorado is a time to honor the legacy of Black Americans, recognize their significant contributions to our state's history and culture, and acknowledge the ongoing challenges and barriers they face. And in 2025, Boulder County honors the contributions specifically of Black Boulder County residents. Whereas, Colorado's Black community has a rich and diverse history, from the pioneers who settled in the state during the 19th century, to the activists who fought for civil rights during the 20th century, to the artists, athletes, and entrepreneurs who continue to make their mark today. Whereas, we must continue to work towards creating a more equitable and just society for all Coloradans, and recognizing the contributions and struggles of the Black community is an essential step towards achieving that goal. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the town council, the town of Superior, we hereby recognize the historical significance of Juneteenth, support the continued celebration of Juneteenth to provide an opportunity for the people of Superior to learn more about the past, to better understand the experiences that have shaped the nation, and encourage the people of Superior to observe Juneteenth Day with appropriate ceremonies, activities, programs, and be it further resolved, the history and the plight of African-Americans and all that was endured during chattel slavery, Reconstruction, Jim Crow, and the Civil Rights Movement is an example of pure resilience.
Proclamation of the Town Council of the Town of Superior in appreciation of the service of John Shalow. Whereas, John Shalow is a resident of the Town of Superior and has been a strong advocate for the residents of Superior through volunteering to serve on the Advisory Committee for Environmental Sustainability and is to be commended for his efforts to help make our community a better place. And whereas, John Shalow was appointed to the Advisory Committee for Environmental Sustainability in 2021 and continued to serve on the committee until 2025. And whereas, John Shalow generously shared his skills and dedication by taking an active role in shaping the future of the Town of Superior. And whereas, the Town of Superior has benefited from John's volunteering, time and energy, and thoughtful participation on the Advisory Committee for Environmental Sustainability. Now therefore, the Town of Superior hereby proclaims its appreciation to John Shalow for his significant contributions to the community and for his service in the Advisory Committee for Environmental Sustainability. On a personal note, I've had the great pleasure of serving with John for the last four years prior to getting elected. And he is just a tremendous community member and a wealth of knowledge, and Superior is on a really good road ahead because of all of his contributions to the community. So, thank you, John.
Thank you, Mike. All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So approved, or so moved, sorry.
We've got a motion from Mayor Protem Serbu.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Foster. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Craycraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Serbu?
Yes.
Mayor Lasis?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowish?
Yes.
All right, passes unanimously. And we are on to item number seven, which is our public hearing in second reading. Consideration of an ordinance of the Town Council, the Town of Superior approving the application to rezone lots one through six, block Q, Superior West, in original town. We have proof of publication?
Yes.
All right, and I will gavel in the public hearing.
Next, Mayor Jeffrey is going to introduce this item for us.
Good evening, Council. I'm Jeffrey Weathers, Planner at Town of Superior. I'm here to present part two of the rezone of lots one through six on block Q in original town. Since we last spoke, the applicant has amended their application to low-density residential. And staff, although we find that it's not quite as supported by our plans, is still supported by our plans, and allow them to go ahead and make that change. I'm here, I can answer any questions about that. The applicant is here, and they can answer questions. We can go through some of the slides if you want to rehash any of that.
Do you want to go through just what has changed?
So this is the zoning for the area. The property in question is outlined in red here. And instead of being medium-density residential, like the lots to the south, it will be low-density residential, like the lots to the east. You can see here the comparison of the development standards. It's fairly the same. The big difference is, is that low-density residential, you can only have single-unit homes, whereas in medium-density residential, you could have single-unit duplexes or multi-unit homes, up to six on a lot.
What's the, the maximum number of homes that could fit on this property as rezoned?
Six.
Total?
Yes. They require 7,000 feet per lot. So that is the area of those lots.
And I know that there's a, there's the maximum kind of lot coverage. Is there any requirement for a minimum size of the homes that would be built there?
There's no requirement for a minimum size of the homes. Yeah, just the lot coverage.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Any additional questions from staff? I know we covered a lot of this at the last meeting.
And just a reminder, it's currently zoned light industrial.
Right.
That's the change.
Thank you.
And just for, for the public's education and information, what, what sorts of uses are allowed on industrial, light industrial usage?
So on a light industrial, I mean, the source of uses would be any kind of like light manufacturing, storage kinds of things, things like nurseries, things like construction, storage, things, things of that nature. I think bottling is one. There's a whole list of, of different uses, but it's generally things that you would consider not heavy manufacturing, but light.
And also, just to educate the public, how was the, the lot used previously?
So previously, before the fire, there was this historic school building that was out of use. It's the, this is the whole entire block Q. So if you imagine the alley running down the middle, it's just these lots here. So there was a single-family home, there was a mobile home, the rest of it was used as industrial storage, if you will.
Okay.
All right. And the schoolhouse wasn't instituted to that site that's been relocated, correct?
The schoolhouse?
Yeah.
I believe the schoolhouse was lost in the fire.
I know it was lost in the fire, but previously, it was in a different site, wasn't it?
That is my understanding, is that it was moved there.
Okay. Neil, you've got your hand raised?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. One process question, and this is, I think, the first time in my history that I've seen an application get changed midstream through the process. Does this, you know, should it go back to the planning commission? I think there's a question for Nick or Jeff. Should it go back to the planning commission because they effectively approved something different? Granted, this is a lighter use, I don't know that it has to, but just to kind of, can you walk us through that process since this effectively is a different application than whatever we have seen in the previous two meetings?
Yeah, that was something of a concern to staff, but staff felt that since they were going to propose a use that's less intensive, and since it was consistent with the comments that we heard from Planning Commission and Council, that re-noticing may not be necessary and that time might be of the essence for the applicant. So going back and re-noticing and going through the process would have been arduous for them.
Okay, no, that's fair. I, I think I appreciate that. And the other question is, provided that this is potentially approved tonight, what is the applicant's timeline for removing the large machinery that's currently resonant on the site? I mean, is there an obligation?
In the applicant's narrative, they said that they would before the sale.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and I think we heard-
They could speak on their own behalf.
It's this week. We have a hauler coming in starting tomorrow.
This week.
Okay, all right.
Why don't we have the applicant just come up to the podium, just to make sure that everything's recorded, in case there's any questions for the applicant?
Team line coming up? Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Elizabeth Cuffner, on behalf of the trust.
All right, could you just answer Councilmember Shaw's question there about timeline, timeline on removing the equipment that's currently on the, on the lot, and then also the timeline for development?
I got a call today from the hauler, and he will be starting tomorrow. They were initially going to do Friday, but they've been able to start it sooner, so.
And what, what about the, just the current plans right now? My understanding, you have the, the lots under contract?
Lots are under contract. The buyer is looking at putting single-family homes with ADUs above the garages. And at this point, my understanding is he's building himself a house and then kind of sitting on the rest for now.
And how many total homes are we expecting?
What was that, sorry?
How many homes are we expecting?
Uh, one per lot.
So six total?
Yep.
And with the ADUs will be attached?
Yeah, I assume so. I haven't seen his plans specifically, but that's what he has, has conveyed to us.
Any additional questions for either town staff or the applicant?
I have a question, I'm not sure who can answer this one. Is there any need for environmental remediation of the site, given the fact that there's been a lot of heavy machinery, derelict vehicles on site that have motor oil and things like that? Is there any, any considerations that we should have going forward from an environmental perspective?
We had that property after the fire. It had been tested, soils have been tested, and the town has signed off on it, ready for basically building from it.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Mike, did you have a question? Okay, we're not there yet. All right, any additional questions for staff or the applicant? All right, let's, thank you. And why don't we open it up for public comment? Anybody like to give public comment on this application? Come on up. We know who you are, but please identify yourself for the record.
I live at 104 Sixth Avenue, which actually overlooks this lot. And I think this is a great idea. I shall actually be quite sorry to see the crane and the bulldozer moved, because I think they add a certain quality to the site. But I think building new houses, building new houses on it will be a much, a significant improvement on what's been there. I don't know how long it's been there, but it's a long time, so please approve this resolution.
Thank you for your comments. Come on up. Please identify yourself.
Good evening, my name is Tommy Lorden, and I live at 403 West William. If you'd be so kind, maybe, as to put the aerial map up of the current, or the zoning, the one that had the red and the yellow?
Yes, thank you. I do want to speak in support of approval of the application for RL, to be clear on that. But I thought, just for the record, if I may approach and point perhaps, well, I guess I'll lose the mic, but there's been a lot of reference to the orange as RM, and everything's multifamily to the south of the, of the lotted issue. And while it's true it's zoned RM, the use is primarily RL. And, and it's been overlooked at every meeting that I've heard, and, and again, tonight, that it's, and so I'm glad it sounds like we're moving towards RL, and that's what the applicant's asking for. And I too want to speak in approval of that, in support of their application, but just wanted to clarify, all this talk of RM to the south is not the reality. It's, it's, it's primarily single-family homes.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else here in council room? Come on up, Mr. Morgan.
I'm Ross Morgan, from 305 West Coal Creek Drive, just down the street from here and down the street from there. You've heard me speak in, in favor of the RL zoning. I was heavily in opposition to the RM. And I'm, I'm really gratified to see that the applicants have made the decision to change what I think is the best thing for original town and for this property. So I hope you'll vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else here in council room? Anybody on Zoom like to give public comment on this agenda item? All right, seeing none. Last chance here in the boardroom. All right, seeing none, public comment is closed. Final questions for staff or the applicant? Public hearing is closed, and we'll move on to discussion. Mike?
I don't have a discussion, I just want to thank the applicant for hearing the feedback that the council provided at the first reading and for amending the application. So, thank you. I'll be supporting this.
Neil, did you want to say anything?
No, I echo Mike's comments. I think we all struggled with the discussion two weeks ago, and I think this is a good edit or a good revision by the applicant, so I'm in support as well.
you. I'll be supporting this.
Anybody else? Neil, did you want to say anything?
No, I echo Mike's comments. I think we all struggled with the discussion two weeks ago, and I think this is a good edit or a good revision by the applicant, so I'm in support as well.
All right. Well, I went back. I missed the last meeting. I went back and I watched it. So, well done, everybody, for having the back and forth with the applicant. I think that the revision from the medium-density residential to the low-density residential, I think, is consistent with the concerns that were echoed from the dais at the last meeting. And I think it just makes sense if the intent of the purchaser of this lot is to develop it in a manner that's consistent with low-density residential, it doesn't make sense to zone it for medium-density residential if it's not going to be used in that way. So I think that the low-density residential use is consistent with the surrounding area. I think it's an improvement from the industrial use, which, you know, was a, you know, historical, I think, relic of one of the cool things about original town, that it was funky and it was unique and had a lot of character. But, you know, unfortunately, the Marshall Fire just changed our town forever. And, you know, as a result, you know, we're never going to be like we were. And this property now is going to be improved in a way that I think is going to make the town, you know, just a better town. And I think that this is a more consistent use for Superior on a going-for basis. So I am also supportive of the ask to rezone to low-density residential. With that, I'll, we've got a resolution, no, we've got an ordinance, just an ordinance. So we've got, I'll make a motion to approve Town Superior Ordinance Number O-12, Series 2025, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Superior, amending the Rock- That's not right. Sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. Make a motion to approve Town Superior Ordinance Number O-12, Series 2025, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Superior approving an application to rezone lots 1 to 6, Block Q, in original town from light industrial to low-density residential, Case Number RZN 202501. Second, got a motion from Mayor Laces, a second from Mayor Protem Serbu, and we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowish?
Yes.
Mayor Laces?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Craycraft?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Serbu?
Yes.
All right, passes unanimously. Okay, it is 8:15. I know we've got the Town 15 public hearing next. I imagine this is going to be a long one. Do you want to take five minutes before we jump into this one? So let's take a five-minute recess. We'll be back at, I'll say, 8:25. All right, we're moving on to Item 8. This is a public hearing and first reading, consideration of an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Superior amending the Rock Creek Ranch Plan Development to remove town-owned property from the Rock Creek Ranch Plan Development and rezone the property from PD Plan Development to OSR Open Space and Recreation. Before we get into the publication and public hearing, had some questions as to like how we got here, and just wanted to clear things up for the public. We have a policy here on the Town Council. If more than, if two or more members of the Town Council request that an item be added to the agenda, it gets added to the agenda. That was the case here. We had two or more members of the Town Council that added, asked to get this added to the agenda. So that's why it's on the agenda for tonight. Notwithstanding that, there is a, there was a recommendation from the Planning Commission to not rezone this, and some concern about whether this is premature in light of the fact that we're going through a comprehensive plan rewrite right now, and the suggestion that we should wait until the comp plan is completed until, before we start talking about rezoning of this item. So before we get into the public hearing, I just wanted to ask the question of the Town Council if there's any appetite to table this item until the comprehensive plan is completed or not? Mike?
Yes.
You want to table it?
Yes.
Okay. Any agenda's not?
I want to table it because there's some more information I want to get before we start moving ahead with this.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to table it as well, and actually would request when we try to get an appraisal, since the value of the lot seems to be driving a lot of the conversation.
Okay. Heather, Stephanie?
I was one of the ones that had seconded. I don't know if anybody else did, to get this on the agenda tonight. I'm a huge proponent of our open space, and I think we've heard loud and clear from residents that that's what they want to see. That being said, with additional public feedback and the fact that we're in the middle of a, you know, comprehensive plan, I do feel like it would be good to not circumvent the process. And I want to hear from everyone tonight, because I think it's important to hear from you. And we're hearing from you with comp plan, you know, feedback. But I think tonight, and any other emails, we read every single one, just so you know. I want to hear from everyone on what they have to say. But that being said, I am hesitant to circumvent the comp plan process. And, you know, to Jason's point, I think we're, we're short on some information that would help drive that discussion. So I would be okay tabling.
Okay. Heather?
I would, I was actually going to ask to table it, so thank you.
Okay. Microphones are on. Should be.
Yeah, test.
All right, so right now we have one, two, three, four, five, directionally in favor of tabling, one not in favor of tabling. My personal opinion is, you know, while I certainly respect the Planning Commission's efforts to go through the process of looking at this parcel, I'm not as concerned about what's going to be contained in the planning, in the comp plan update. So I feel like this parcel has been discussed in like fits and starts over the years. And, you know, kicking the can inevitably down the road is, I don't know if the opinions on the matter are necessarily going to materially change with a comp plan update. So my personal opinion would be to move forward with it. But I certainly understand, and I don't mean any disrespect to the Planning Commission, who's going through the process of doing the comp plan update. I just think that this particular parcel is worth discussing now for the sake of the community. So that's, that's my take. But I also respect the wishes of everyone to table this, to have additional information.
Well, Mark, to that point, I think, I can't speak for anybody else. I'll speak for myself. I have a number of questions that would, I would like to see answers to before ultimately deciding on the fate of this property, because it is a very important piece of property. And so having a public discussion and council questions, so that either town staff or the Planning Commission can come back as a part of that, to provide some of that context. To Neil's point, having a current appraisal, so we know what we're talking about in $2025 and not in $2019, I think would be helpful and insightful. It may not change the outcome, but at least we're, at least we're using current data to make the decision. So I wouldn't, I would be supportive of absolutely having a conversation, hearing from the public, getting our comments and questions out, and then having, at some point in the near future, having that information come back to the council for consideration on whatever decision we decide to go with.
Okay. So, anything, Jen, did you want to add?
I wrote some more things, so I would love the opportunity to share them before we move from the decision. So I'm the one who called for this to be added to the agenda, because I believe it's well past the time to make a definitive decision on Town 15. We have extensive, consistent community input spanning multiple years, yet continue to treat this as an unresolved question. To date, no one's been asking for more community engagement on this property. We have abundant data, hundreds of survey responses, multiple community engagement sessions, years of consistent feedback, all point to the same direction. Residents want this property designated as open space in some capacity. And additionally, I've only received a handful of emails requesting housing on this specific site and no requests for commercial use. So I just feel like asking residents to repeat the same input they've provided for years is ineffective governance and really disrespectful of their time. It forces community members, it forces community members into a state of hyper vigilance, requiring them to repeatedly attend meetings to defend a position they've already clearly articulated. And I want to address comments about this being some sort of circumvention of the Planning Commission process to update the comp plan. So the direction on updating the comp plan is to provide a basis for current and future land use decisions for the Town of Superior. It's noted in the comp plan direction that the plan should seek to facilitate rational decisions regarding future development. The Planning Commission's work is extremely valuable, but I don't think it's very rational to ask them to spend time on a property where community preference is already well documented. Making this decision now means freeing up planning resources to focus on areas where the community is genuinely divided and multiple viable options do exist. While I feel strongly that any housing potential should never be dismissed, the reality of this particular property being zoned for residential development is unlikely. This community has consistently opposed density increases elsewhere. The last item that we voted on was leaning in the direction of single-family, because people didn't even want duplexes. Every housing discussion meets resistance over safety, parking, views, and property values. And given this pattern, I think expecting support for housing on Town 15 of any kind is unrealistic. I think the same would apply for selling the lot to be developed, even if we receive the very inflated amount of $30 million based on assessor value. Residents have shown no desire to release control of this property to a developer, nor have they been asking for it to be developed by the town. In terms of fiscal responsibility, we've spent considerable resources on consultants and community engagement that repeatedly confirm the same community preference. In my opinion, continuing the cycle through the comp plan update wastes taxpayer money and valuable staff and volunteer time. Our role is to serve residents, not to second-guess clear, consistent community input. When hundreds of responses point in one direction over multiple years, continued hesitation may suggest we're serving some other agenda rather than our residents. And I don't believe anybody on this council is trying to do that. So by designating Town 15 as open space, we are honoring the- So by designating town 15 as open space, we are honoring the community input, enabling real housing discussions on locations where community support might actually exist, which would actually improve the efficiency of the Planning Commission's work. Additionally, and for me probably the most important point, this frees residents from having to continue to repeatedly defend their clearly stated preferences. This isn't about rushing a decision, it's about making a decision based on the extensive existing information. The question isn't whether we have enough data, it's whether we'll act on the data we have. So for those opposing immediate action, I would like to ask, what new information do you expect to gain that would override years of consistent community input? And if you can identify specific achievable outcomes that would change this trajectory, then continuing this discussion even in the comp plan process serves no purpose beyond delay. The residents have done their part, they've engaged, they've provided input, they've been consistent, and now it's time for us to do ours. We work for them, they told us what they want us to do, I think that we need to do it.
All right. So well said, Jen. In terms of the question that you asked there and what additional information would people need, sounded like Neil and Mike were interested in an appraisal potentially, but I don't want to speak out of turn here, so maybe, maybe if everybody can just kind of answer Jen's questions as to what additional information they would need before...
What I, what I, the information that I would like to see is in the context of all of the undeveloped parcels of land in town, not just town 15. When we talk about Zaharius, when we talk about Resolute, when we talk about town 15, we talk about them in isolation. And when we do community surveys about, do we want to convert this to open space? The overwhelming response is yes, but those questions are asked in isolation of each other. If, I'm not opposed to rezoning town 15 as open space recreation, that's totally on the table for me, but I want to do that in, with the complete and clear understanding that if we're going to do that, then we need to understand as a town what that means for these other properties, should we want to develop them or have, or have a development proposal come in, because we have very few opportunities in town to, for economic development, for additional retail, for additional tax base. And again, I want this in the broader context of what this means for the long-term financial stability of the town and not in isolation. So having, whether it's the Planning Commission or town staff, come back with a much more comprehensive analysis of what that looks like so we can make a more informed decision and again, so we can daylight that for the community if this is what this means. If we're going to rezone town 15 for open space recreation, then we need to develop three of the four remaining properties or something to that effect so that we can continue to function as a town and have tax revenue coming in 20, 30, 50 years from now. Because once it's rezoned open space, it's never going back. I'm not aware of a piece of open space in the state of Colorado that was rezoned open space and then rezoned something else for development. So that's, that's the piece of data that I would like to see, that would be helpful for me. Like I said, I'm not opposed to the idea of zoning it as recreation, but I want it, I want that conversation in the broader context.
Heather?
And I think part of that conversation ended with our dinner with Planning Commission. Part of that conversation was, what are we looking for? So to continue that, I fully appreciate everyone's involvement in this because I think that's the best part of our community, but I'm, I'm in the, probably in the same kind of category of just needing to understand better and maybe that's because I'm newer to sitting up here, but I've been a resident. I remember when that piece of property got switched around. So just understanding the full picture of what, and I guess that was my quick answer about the comprehensive plan, is understanding better what our other options are. Having talked to residents to answer that question, I don't feel confident in answering that question to them at this time. So I, I fully agree that this is not something we can push down the road, but I would love to have more of a conversation around it before we go to a vote. And I'm not against open space recreational either, so.
If I could just, so I heard everybody about what you want, more information, but I, what I really want to know is what do you think you are going to get that's going to change the trajectory of this? Like what do you think you're going to get in any kind of information that's going to change your thoughts about what the residents have asked for? Because we can, go ahead.
Yeah, let me, and the reason why I suggested an appraisal, because the land has value. We went to the taxpayers, you know, they, they elected to, you know, increase our taxes and it's going to produce 15 to 18 million dollars in taxes that we're using to move forward on a bunch of capital projects. What we paid for this parcel in 2012 is sort of an irrelevant number. While we got a screaming good deal back then, you know, we, we got to be realistic on what it's worth now. So let's say it's worth $10 million, you know, based on a third party appraisal and not what we're seeing from the assessor's office. I need to understand from staff how we can use the open space dollars to pay for that because we need to make ourselves whole relative to the land and its value that it has relative to the market. We had a tremendous number of emails on that subject alone and I am reticent to move forward with the open space designation unless we can ensure that we're made whole relative to the value of the land. When we bought Coyote Ridge many years ago, about 12 months elapsed between when we started that process and when we finally closed, and the value went up on it by about 8%. We were paid, we had to pay that extra 8% because it was sold by a third party. They didn't give us a discount even though they're going to write it all off. And I think we have to think about this in the same way. So for me, I, and I've been part of this conversation for, for a long time. 2018, we had the unsolicited sort of, let's develop it into a school and, you know, I was, and I am still in support of moving this in the rec and open space direction, but I need to know what the thing is worth and how we're going to fund it with open space dollars because using the 1.2 to pay for it is kind of a non-starter for me. It's got to be a market rate based on when we designated open space.
Okay.
And I don't know what's available in the open space funds, I need to see that from staff. And the thing that does change is with the charter, it does take a full townwide vote to flip something from open space back to something else. And I did talk to a home rule commissioner who was a little surprised because they, their interpretation is only when value's been exchanged, when, when the town has paid for the parcel, does it sort of go into that bucket of things that need to be undone by the full populace of the, the community? And that's, that's an unknown to me as well.
Okay. Thanks for that, Neil. Jason, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I did. First, I want to thank everybody for coming. I know this is a very hot button issue and you guys care very deeply about this property. And I've talked to many of you pre-election individually, in groups, and, you know, I told you, I do not want to see town 15 developed and I still don't. I don't see that there's any viable opportunity for development, but I'm very, very hesitant to name anything else open space and let me tell you why. Look what's going on in Boulder County. Massive amounts of, you know, property values, homelessness, issues they've got going on because in the late 1980s, they decided with the Danish plan, let's buy up every single piece of open space we possibly can to stop growth. So what happened to housing prices? They started to skyrocket. When the Danish plan started, it was a limited growth to 2%. When Paul Danish stepped down from the commission, the new people came in and says, hey, we like it so much and we want to stop people from moving here from New York, from Texas to California, that they dropped it to 1% development. And that's when you saw pricing skyrocket. And that's why for a comparably priced house in Lewisville that you might spend 750, 800 thousand dollars on, you're going to spend $2 million in Boulder. I do not want to see that happen in the town of Superior. We talk about affordable housing and if we talk about the fact that we need to let the people speak, we did a poll and we did that little survey. 66% of people in the town of Superior do not want affordable housing here. They think it's going to affect their property values, they don't want to see it happen. So I'm very cautious going forward with speaking of open space because, you know, when we create, when I was elected back on this board and I was appointed pro tem, we created a new position called economic development and I am the liaison to economic development and I work with our economic development director and council member Miller was also on that. And one of the things I'm seeing in our town right now is how can we get that to happen? How can we get Main Street to be populated with businesses, with commercial, with retail, with restaurants? And we are struggling right now because not only is the infrastructure cost expensive across the street, it's almost expensive, as expensive as Pearl Street is. When you develop a space brand new, there is no arc, there's no interiors, there's no HVAC, electrical plumbing, that has to be brought in by the first person, that is ungodly expensive. So we are trying to do subsidies, monetary and tax-based incentives on the backend, but still we're having a very, very difficult time bringing people in who are willing to lay down that kind of money to do this. So we're stagnating a little bit, but we're working very hard. Big Spies Folly is slated to open up in a year and a half once they start construction and we're really hoping that they're going to be starting construction soon. We just approved a grant for Korean barbecue on Main Street, so we're really excited for them to open up. It'll be our first restaurant on Main Street. And these businesses want to help each other. You know, we had the Pilates opening up and the big joke is I'm going to go there and I'm going to die, but Crack Boba was there to help out. Kim next door, she brought in Bobas and they mixed it with champagne and they had these little mini cocktails for people and it really makes me think that this community here that wants to create economic development is going to happen, but we still are falling short on that. We had to pass a tax initiative on sales tax in order to do the roads and the pools. We are so high up on that right now, we can't do that again because whatever businesses we have are going to say, well, you know what, you guys are charging two months on tax for us, we're going to go somewhere else and go. Target's flatlining right now. Target sales are not going up the way they want it to be and we are looking at King Supers coming in the next year and a half to take over the Lowe's building over there. What do you think is going to happen when that goes in? King Supers is an amazing marketplace, it's better than our Safeway, let's be realistic about this. It will challenge Target, it will challenge Safeway, it'll challenge Whole Foods. We've got three grocers that we depend on. What's going to happen when they come in and excuse my French, but they start kicking our ass on sales? We lose Target, what do we do? We're stuck with Costco. Our tax base could collapse. I'm not saying that I ever want to sell town 15, but I would like to know what the value of it is because I would like to see us going forward and I don't think, I mean, I think maybe a couple of you were here to the end of the Planning Commission meeting, I would like to see us as a town start to explore the addition of land in unincorporated Boulder County to our northwest corridor. I would like to see what it would take for us to be able to bring more land into Superior so we can create the middle housing, so we can actually create some affordable housing. 55 and up for seniors, there's a large population of people in Rock Creek that would love to get out of their 6,000 square foot home that they're living in as empty nesters and have a ranch plan that they can actually move around in, not worry about staircases that they can age in place in. You know, these are concerns that I have going forward. As I said, I don't want to develop town 15. Retail can't go there because we need to focus on downtown and Brixmore and the Safeway Plaza for that. Commercial doesn't make any sense there either. Affordable housing, like I said, the people have spoken on that. I just want to get more information to see, are we making the most prudent decision for our town? Because I don't want to see in 20 years, what I'm all feeble and old and I can't remember anyway, that we shot ourselves in the foot by designating a very, a very valuable piece of land as open space that we can't pull back. And now we're looking at a situation like Boulder is because they can't figure out their own problems and they keep coming to us to say, you fix affordable for us, you do this for us. And my answer is like, you guys started this, you created it, fix your own problem, don't rely on us to continually bail you out. I just want to see us maintain our sense of economic stewardship and stability going forward and I just want to make sure that we make the right decision on this going forward for the entirety of the community.
So in terms of what additional information you would need before making this decision before us, is it the appraisal? Is it?
The appraisal's a big thing and I do, I do see what Neil's point is, I'd like to see that if open space does want to purchase it, what is that going to look like for available funds? I want to see what the value is on, on, you know, on the market for the land. You know, I'm not in any rush to develop this, I, I think it's beautiful the way it is. I'm a little concerned though that in the middle of the comprehensive plan process and I was on the Planning Commission and I resigned on it, but, and that was one thing that we talked about. You know, I'll finish up, Mark, so I'm going to rant and keep you guys here all night because I do want to hear from you guys. You know, the Council members, comprehensive plan is important because it kind of gives us a guiding post as we move forward in the town. I just want to make sure that any decision we make is not going to handcuff us to something that we're going to regret 10 or 20 years later. The appraisal value is a big part of that.
All right, so you, you want to know the appraisal value? Do you give it a position as to whether you want to see the comp plan finished first?
I would like to see the comp plan finished just because we started it. You know, when I was on, when I was planning, planning commission, now I'm sorry if that's an unpopular vote, but that's, we created this, one committee has been wanting to do this for the longest time. I would like to see that through and see where we can get us with a comprehensive plan. I don't think it's going to change anything. You know, there's, there's no applicant right now for this land. There, there is nobody looking to purchase the land right now. So we're trying to make a zoning change because open space wants to see about picking this up, but it's a very valuable piece of property and I'm very hesitant about making, making a move in that direction so quickly.
Okay.
I just want to tread very carefully on this.
Stephanie, what additional information would you need?
I mean, for me, I don't know that any information's going to change my mind that it should be open space recreational with opportunities for civic use and open space natural around that wildlife core. I think because we're in the middle of a comprehensive plan, similar to what Mike said, I think having a holistic look at it, and again, I don't know that it's going to change my mind, but I never want to shoot down discussion and I feel like looking at it holistically to say, okay, yes, we're going to designate this open space recreation, civic, you know, however that looks, as a community benefit because we've heard from the community that, that, that's what they want. What are the repercussions of that and what else are we looking at then for development? I don't think it makes any sense for commercial, period. It's an odd location at this point. I get why it was zoned that way initially with the development supposedly going west, but that clearly didn't happen. So that would be an odd place for commercial and we need to focus on our current commercial cores to make sure they're successful. It makes, you know, little to no sense is attainable housing because it's not along any sort of transit, you know, units and, and I feel like there's better places for that. So really, I don't know that anything's going to change my mind, but I also want to look at it holistically since we're looking at everything holistically to make sure that we know, okay, now this is open space recreation or civic or, you know, whatever that looks like, what does that mean for the other parcels that we need to focus on for, you know, not just, you know, commercial success and, you know, housing, because I know we've heard from community members that everybody's concerned about their property values, totally get that. With dwindling enrollment because people can't afford to live here who have young families and hopefully, you know, downtown kind of revitalizes as our schools, but, you know, if we have to shut down a school, that's going to have a major impact on our property values. So something to be cognizant of and, you know, property taxes. So if we don't have, you know, areas when we're looking at the comp plan that we can put other commercial cores or attainable housing to bring residents in, you know, what does that do for our taxes in the future? Because, you know, God forbid, we have a massive hit, which I can't imagine, we're not going to have some sort of hit with King Supers. You know, it's something to consider if one of our large retailers leave, you know, what does that do to our tax base? So I think as we're looking at all these things and all the different pieces and how they play together, in the end, I think, I feel one way about this piece and I don't know that any of that information's going to change, but I would like to see that as part of that holistic look.
Okay. All right, so if I'm hearing everybody, it sounds like Neil wants the appraisal. Mike, Heather, Jason and Stephanie really want to have the, the comprehensive plan, do the holistic look?
Can I also say on the, because I know that the questions come up and correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, but I don't think there are funds in the open space, we need to revitalize those to even purchase additional pieces. So I don't think there's this like ground swell of funding that we're going to be able to then pay ourselves back. Also don't know that, and I could be convinced otherwise, but to Neil's point, I don't know that I agree with, we need to buy it with today's dollars. I, you know, an appraisal's not a bad idea to see what it's worth, but, you know, zoning it open space, I wouldn't necessarily agree with making open space funds pay 30 million or essentially charging our taxpayers 30 million to buy something that we already own that I'm sure was purchased with taxpayer money. So if we would go that route, I would be more in favor of the open space funds paying back what we paid for it to then open up funds for other things, but not necessarily charge ourselves more for something that taxpayers already paid for.
Okay.
And to clarify, I think you're, you're right, Stephanie. I want to have that as part of the dialogue to know what the parcel is worth at the time of the potential rezone. Because that's, I mean, we've, we've received a number of points about that and I want to make sure everybody's been using the appraiser, I'm sorry, the, the appraised value of $30 million, which may or may not be right, but I want to make sure that, you know, whatever we have, we're using the right data.
Right, the assessor's value.
That sounds right, yeah, that's, that's the word. It's late here, so, yeah.
Okay. In light of that discussion, Jen?
So as far as appraisal, I think that is a good idea so that we do have an accurate value of it. I, I agree, I don't think it will change anything. value of it. I, I agree. I don't think it will change anything. That also doesn't have to be part of the comprehensive plan process. And in terms of OSAC having the funding for this, that is something I think that we can talk about. You basically spelled it out of the ability to pay ourselves back essentially in that, which also doesn't have to be part of the comprehensive plan process. And so if this is going to get tabled, or it's going to be turned back over for a comprehensive plan, I would just really like the information of all the feedback over the years for this property that we already know and have collected to be part of that conversation. Because looking at it from a planning commission perspective, as just a piece of land that can be considered for anything, is, I just think hugely disrespectful to the people that have already told you over and over again, and again, and again, that this is not what they want to do with it. And then listening to council members, many of you say, well, I'm probably going to want it to be open space. And so I just, the lens in which the planning commission reviews this, I think it would be a huge waste of time to be considering all the things you can do with this property if everybody is already going down the lane of turning this into open space. And it's less for me about that it, that it has to be held in that lane, but I think there is a missed opportunity for the other developable properties if this is still held as a space that could have housing or could have commercial development, which even if all of us decided that's what we want, they don't want that. And we are here because that, they put us here. And so we're supposed to be doing what they want. And I feel like that's something past I think that's something past councils have failed, and I think we've, they've all landed in the same spot. Oh, we know what we should do. They told us what to do, but I need more information, or I need more, whatever it is. And so we're right there. We're like right in the same spot as previous councils have been, or boards have been. And I just don't want this to land in the same space. So if we're going to table it, if there's a way to table it where we remove it from the comprehensive plan conversation until we make a decision on it, because I don't want the planning commission to, the holistic look including it, if we, we are leaning in the direction of it not being part of anything that they should be considering for development. I just, I just don't want it to go back to the way that it was, because we've put it on a shelf. That's it. And I think the information that all of you need isn't something that prohibits them from moving on with the comprehensive plan while we get answers to those questions.
If I could just say something, I mean, this is, you know, this, to me, wasn't going to be a discussion about comprehensive plans and what they do, but I think that's where we're headed. But the biggest issue we've always had with the comprehensive plan is that we don't own any of the parcels on that list. You know, the, the big Z's, Zaharius, used to be number one on the list for, for OSAC behind the Creek properties. The Creek properties we now own, and Zaharius has now fallen further down on the list. But when we start, start talking about Zaharius and development, we're going to have three times the number of people in the room that don't want anything getting developed there. But we don't own it. We have no rights over that land. Same with Discovery, same with Resolute. So the challenge with the comprehensive plans, we have these aspirational goals on what we can or can't do with these parcels that we don't own. And that's always been the problem. Town 15, we do own. And while I completely agree, we have a fantastic, we went through fantastic Pro's master plan development in terms of what we can do with Town 15, we didn't move forward because we didn't have any money, or, you know, the resources to do so. And that's why I want to understand what it's worth. If there is a way, again, you know, back to what is in the open space to funds today, can we borrow against those funds for the next 20 years to pay ourselves back and potentially develop it with rec space? There's things that we can do that I need to understand a little bit more. But the challenge of the comp plan is it's always going to be aspirational, and it's always going to be limited based on what the landlords of those parcels want or don't want to do. Westminster was very successful, different redevelopment of the old Westminster Mall, because they owned the land. They got to control who developed it and in what boxes and exactly how it got developed. We, we can do that with Town 15, but not with the other parcels.
I, I just don't think that even if all of the other developable lands don't get a developer interest, that is not going to change the residents' thoughts about what they want to happen to Town 15. And I think that's the problem, is we keep going in circles about like, we should keep this over here just in case, and we own it. And all of that is true, but the one constant is over the years, the people telling us what they want it, want to happen to it. And so I just, I don't want to keep going as if that's not been done already. It just, if I was in their seat and I had to keep watching and seeing what this committee's doing and this council's doing, to potentially miss out on an opportunity to communicate something, I would be livid. I, I would be really angry. And in a world of electeds not doing the things that people put them in office to do, this is a big deal to me, to make this right. It really is.
Okay. So in terms of how we're going to proceed tonight, you know, we can make a motion, and, you know, one, one possibility would be a motion to, and I guess we could do a straw poll as to like who wants to proceed versus who wants to, to, to table it. And then if, if the majority wants to table, then the question is, table until what condition? Is it both an appraisal and a comp plan update? Is it a comp plan update? Is it an appraisal? And we could just do a series of motions and see what passes, what fails. And if they all fail, then we just proceed with the hearing tonight?
Well, Mark, I'll just add, and, and I realize that this comment is, it could be used both ways, so I acknowledge that. You know, I, I watched the, the planning commission meeting, and I really appreciate the thoughtful conversation that they had and the deliberations that they had. And my takeaway from that was that we need to have public trusts in our processes, which means they're consistent, reliable. We're currently working through the process of a comp plan update, and I believe we need to let that process work its way to completion. You know, Town 15 is still going to be there in two, three months. I can't remember if it was Heather or, or Mayor Protam that said that there are no imminent development proposals, so it's not like it's under threat of development, which is why my preference is to wait until the comp plan process is completed with that additional analysis. And again, I don't know if that's part of the comp plan or work that Matt's team needs to do and bring back as part of the comp plan update of looking at the undeveloped parcels of land and what the economic development potential. You know, in the staff memo, it's laid out for different scenarios, but that's just focused on Town 15. So in full transparency, I'd like to see a similar analysis on the undeveloped parcels, even though we don't own them, but what might those look like so we can be transparent with the community? And these are the trade-offs that we have to consider. And again, I acknowledge when I use the term, we have to work through our process, can be used on both sides, both sides of the argument.
Okay. Anybody have a strong feeling as to how we'd like to proceed tonight?
I don't know if this is a direction. I guess I, I sit in this seat, and having these conversations, it's the first time Jen and I have looked across the table and discussed this, because some people think we might all gather in back rooms and discuss, but this is literally the first time any of us have sat here and kind of weighed these. And I love hearing from my, my teammates on this dais, we're not always going to agree. And obviously, I've heard very well from the community, many of you repeatedly, and thank you for that. And I know that doesn't solve anything. I wish we could have a, a work session on this before and had had some of these conversations to give staff some more guidance before we sat here and not have, you know, put the planning commission through the same conversation, even though I think it was valuable in many ways to help us lead in the future. So again, I don't think that helps. I just had to say, I wish we could have these conversations. I wish we could have a second reading. I don't, I know that's probably not legal, of some way to move this forward without having to postpone it for
Well, this is the first reading. This is the schedule. So we would have a second reading regardless. So we're not making a decision on rezoning it tonight, even if we opened a public hearing. Correct? Keep me honest there. All right. My suggestion would be somebody make a motion to table this with whatever condition they want to include, whether it's appraisal, comp plan completion, or both. And then we just go down the list and see what passes.
Can I make a motion then?
Or fails? Did you have something, Jen?
I just, I don't want to table it, but go ahead. So I'll vote.
Were you voting yet? I don't know what's going on.
I can kind of fill the space a little bit.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So the motion here, this is getting kind of deep procedure. The motion is just a motion to table, period. Now, if you want to give direction to staff subsequent to that motion about things we need until it's time to untable this, to take it off the table, then that's fine. But if you want to table, the motion should just be the table. If you want to postpone, it needs to be to a date certain. So it can't be until the comp plan is done, or until we have an appraisal. It needs to be until September 8th, or something like that. So if you want to postpone to a date certain, you need to pick a date certain. That would mean opening and continuing the hear, I would recommend opening and continuing the hearing. If you want to table, I would just table, no hearing. And then we'll revisit once the things that you've directed staff to fulfill are fulfilled. And that would probably mean, I'll stick with that for now.
If we, if it, if it gets tabled, does that mean they don't get to comment on it tonight?
That's up to you guys. If it gets tabled, there's no public hearing, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a comment at the public hearing, but you're more than welcome to, I would essentially recommend just reopening public comment, and then having whatever they want to comment about, which of course will all be Town 15, but it would just be a second public comment, period.
Is, is there anyone in, on staff or the room that could give a timeframe for getting an appraisal for land like this? Like, what does that look like? Weeks, months?
I couldn't give you a timeframe.
Stephanie says a month. She knows stuff. So I trust that. I, I, I'm, is, is it possible in tabling for it to be, the planning commission's going to continue with their comprehensive plan update, right? So if we table it to, or if we postpone it to a date, or we table it with no date, does that mean they keep going with it part of the comprehensive plan? Or is that one of the conditions? Can we make it part of the comprehensive plan, like that it's not part of the comprehensive plan review right now?
I understand practically they're all, they're all related, but I would say technically they're, they're separate and apart from one another. Because planning commission's doing the comprehensive plan, and then sep, and that's just their thing they're doing. And separate and apart would be the hearing on the town's application of the rezone. So I don't think you can combine them like you want to combine them.
My, my intent is that they're not working on something that might ultimately, I don't want them to waste time working on something that may not come back to them.
I hear you.
And there's not really anything I can do about that. Okay.
Part of the process now.
Yep.
Well, regardless of the appraisal, I mean, is there any chance that we can put this on our next Monday's work session and begin talking about it there?
We won't have information ready for you by
Well, and on the appraisal, but I mean, I mean, to Heather's point, I mean, more discussion from us on this at a work session might be beneficial.
Right, but we're in a land use position right now, right?
That's a good point.
I, I would recommend, yeah, and sorry, to Councilmember Craycraft and Mayor Protam, but I would recommend that this stay in the quasi judicial process and not go to the work session.
But if we
Fair enough.
Table it, then it's not, right? Maybe like, if, if we're postponing it, like, we're still in the quasi judicial process. If we're tabling it, it may never come back up, right? So what's prohibiting us from talking about it in a work session?
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
So tabling it with the direction to get an appraisal and work up whatever the purchasing agreement would look like between OSAC and the town, so that we could be able to discuss it, discuss it, or is
Correct.
Okay. If it gets voted to be tabled. I have a feeling that that is going to happen, so I'm just trying to sort out what this is going to look like. So.
Matt, or maybe Nick, refresh my memory on the tax funds that go toward open space. Is that only to purchase open space natural, or is also open space recreation able to be reimbursed with those funds?
I believe it's both. I don't, we'll double check the ballot language, but I believe it's both.
Okay. And then any park amenities or anything? Park would be out of the park budget, obviously not open space. Okay.
Is OSAC going to be amenable, though, if we agree to go open space restricted, and they want it to all be natural, because their position is natural? And then if we just, we decide to just develop civic on there, like, for example, we do a completely new town hall civic space with police, fire, everything on that, are they going to be amenable to that? Yeah, this, this could be a situation where kicking it and kicking it over and over again.
I mean, that opens up a good question, too, if we're reimbursing ourselves.
How do we do that?
But does Park
Yeah.
Have an opinion of keeping it as recreation?
Miami Park has a master plan that
Right.
Define uses for it.
I realize that, you know, our committees have differing perspectives on, and different visions for, for this piece of property. You know, one of the questions that I would like to have answered probably by town staff is, in an hypothetical situation, if there became a time in the near future where we needed to build, let's say, a library, you know, what parcels of land in town would be available for that? And would that be Town 15? Would that be the back of this building? So again, trying to look into the future of what some of the possibilities might look like, those, these are the kinds of conversations that, or discussions I'd like to have in, in a larger context. And if that's a work session where we start to flesh some of these ideas out, so we can kind of get it all out on the table for discussion. And if that's outside the comp plan, that's fine, but again, I'd like to have that broader context.
Once something's tabled, how do you untable it?
Make a motion, take it off the table.
Okay.
And, and Jen, just for the record, I am not, I would not support in perpetuity tabling this. I, I agree that we need to make a decision. I want to make a decision. So, you know, if we can make a decision on this before the end of the calendar year, assuming that we can get the information we need from town staff, that's, that's where I'd be headed.
Okay. Why don't we open up for any public comment who would like to give public, really on the, on the question of the timing? No?
I would vote, if you guys want to table, I would vote to table. If you want to postpone, I would vote to postpone. If you want to open the public hearing, I would open the public hearing. I would not have public comment on this motion. Not in offense to you guys, but we're not, they're not going to comment, again, not in offense to you guys, but they're not going to comment on what's the right motion here. They're going to comment on what they want to see from the application. So I would decide what you guys want to do. And if you want to open the public hearing, then March 4th. But if you want to table, then I would table without, without public comment. And then take public comment as a public comment time.
Okay. Thank you for your counsel. All right. So is there a motion to table? I know you're not.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to table.
All right. Motion from Councilmember Shaw?
Second.
Second from Mayor Protam Serbu. It's a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Lasas?
No.
Mayor Protam Serbu?
Yes.
Member Cowish?
No.
Councilmember Miller?
No.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Councilmember Craycraft?
We're all working on this together.
Yeah, routine, routine.
We'll get through this.
All right. Motion passes four to three. In terms of directing staff, sounds like there's direction from the board that at a minimum, we want an appraisal. So you can get back to us as to how long that estimate's going to take.
This week, I'll have that timeframe for you.
Okay. And can we add this to our work session agenda for Monday to, to at least discuss kind of the mechanics of additional things that are needed, or does all that direction need to be given right now?
I mean, I think I have the direction. If you want to have the additional discussion, I'll add it, but I'm not sure what additional.
Well, I guess the question is really like, do we need a comp plan update? You know, like, some, some of the members up here seem to want to have the comp plan finished in a holistic approach.
Sure, yeah.
And if that's the case, then
I'll just go ahead and add it and
Can I add also, you know, to Councilmember Foster's point, right? And we've heard from OSAC. And we've heard from OSAC, but we have to hear from, you know, Parks, uh, Pro, uh, Prostag, not Prostag, the Parks Committee. You know, they had a lot of ideas on what they wanted to do with the parcel, and that's got to be part of the same discussion.
And as part of the discussion, we need to understand to what extent the open space fund can reimburse the town, because the town purchased this property out of the general fund, not out of open space dollars. So if we're going to designate it for open space and/or open space R, is it a, a, a potential avenue for the town to reimburse itself out of the open space fund?
That's correct. Well, that's information we'll have to prepare for you.
Okay.
And one last question relative to the Home Rule Charter. If it's open space or rec, does it still fall under the same bucket in terms of needing a full townwide vote to reverse it? Not that I want to do that, I just want to understand the legal landscape.
Yes. So the charter, the charter doesn't differentiate between open space and an open space R. Just says open space. And then it says to rezon to a, to a denser designation. So yeah, for all intents and purposes, once it goes open space, it's going to need a vote, whichever one is chosen.
So if, you know, in that sort of rezon conversation, for sake of argument, seven acres of it was open space and eight acres was rec at the rezon, then only one would fall under the open space aspect of the charter, not the whole thing?
They're both open space designations, right?
That's correct.
So yeah, so the whole thing would fall under it.
Okay, okay, all right. Got it.
Okay.
Sorry. Those open space designations, the rec, does that allow for civic use? Like if we ended up needing a library or I, I can't imagine we'd ever be able to afford a rec center, nor do I think we need one with what we have nearby, but would either have, I mean, obviously not natural, but would rec allow for that?
It does. It's one of the allowed uses.
And then my question would be similar to what's been said, but I want to make sure I'm articulating this correctly. If we're having, I mean, obviously open space funds and we ended up having to put a library or something on there, I would imagine open space funds wouldn't still be paying for that. And I want to avoid us paying one fund and then paying back another and then paying another. So just getting some clear delineation on how we pay for that out of open space funds.
That's part of the information that we'll prepare for you.
Okay. Thank you.
One of the scenarios.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay. I, I haven't looked at what the agenda looks like for the work session. Is this real, like, this is going to be an in very in-depth conversation, so is it heavy?
I only have, I have three items currently on there.
Okay.
So I think we have time. We have dinner with the Historic Commission first, um, but we should have time.
Could we put this first, just to make sure we really have time to cover it?
Yeah.
All right. Staff have everything it needs?
We do.
Mark, I just want to clarify that, um, again, in today's staff, or tonight's staff memo, the fiscal impact scenario summary, um, again, this was just focused on Town 15. If town staff could run those scenarios for Zaharias?
Yeah, that was in one of our meetings that, and we are working on that currently.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay. Anything further on this item? All right. That, uh, that concludes item eight. We apologize to the members of the public who were here to give public comment, but we're not going to be getting onto the rezoning tonight.
Can we still hear from them?
Yes, I will open up public comment now. It's not part of the public hearing. So if anybody would like to give public comment on this item, notwithstanding the fact we're not proceeding with the rezoning tonight, welcome to do so.
Are we going to go down the list?
We're going to go down the list, so Rita Trainor.
And I'm first on the list.
And you are first on the list. If, to keep it a little more orderly, I know I told some of you all not to sign in. If you guys want to come sign in, that would probably be better. Because I only have about some of you on the list, but we can just start and we get to you, we get to you, you're first.
Okay, did everyone hear him? In case you haven't signed up and you want to speak, he wants you to sign up on the paper over there.
Yeah, I pushed a couple of you guys away, but I'm bringing you back.
My name is Rita Trainor. I'm a resident of Superior. And full disclosure, although I'm not here in an official capacity, I am the vice chair of OSAC, and as Cara had indicated earlier, more OSAC people will be talking. We have talked about this property multiple times in our OSAC meetings. We updated our Town 15 position last year. That's a paper that was presented to the board and accepted by the board. It is posted on the website for anybody who's interested in it. But the long and the short of it is, we would like it to be open space natural. I know most of you guys are okay with accepting recreation, but as Cara and I say, we'd like to have nothing bigger, no bigger structure than a bathroom built on it. But I understand that there are, there are many competing uses that would fall under open space. I do have a question that I believe Matt said that he was going to get an answer to. I'm not a hundred percent clear on this. The sales tax that's used that's in the open space fund, I don't know whether that can be used for open space recreation as well as open space natural. Is that something that you know off the top of your head?
That's something that we're going to check on.
Okay, thank you. Because that's something I don't know. But I can tell you that right now, the open space fund doesn't have anywhere near $10 million, nor does it have the bonding capacity to do that. We do have some bonds that will be completely paid off in 2026. I believe that yields another, was it $80,000 and we're not talking big bucks here. So if they would, as I was going to say trustee, Councilmember Shaw earlier alluded to, um, the idea of them paying at market value, even though historically they've paid, when this situation has arisen, OSAC has paid for the property at the historic cost. Of course, I would prefer that to be the case, but I also understand that there might be some meeting in the minds. I'm just trying to point out that it would take years for the open space fund to pay that back to the town. Not saying it can't be done, just pointing out that it would take years and tie up those resources for a great cause. I'm a hundred percent in favor of this being open space, and I do understand it's a valuable piece of property and has potential other uses. It's my biased opinion that open space is the best. And I don't really have any further comments to add.
Thank you for your comments.
Um, David Harper?
David Harper.
I'm still David Harper. At the open house that we had a week or so ago, a gentleman explained to me that a serious concern, actually I see him here tonight, hi Dave, uh, that a serious concern for the residents about developing Town 15 was the impact it would have on the value of their houses. I do understand that and also, uh, of the impact that it might have on their views. This issue has come up in downtown Superior, most recently from the residents of Canary Lane about the apartments being built on Block 8. The solution was to work with the developer to minimize the impact, not to leave the lot undeveloped. Town 15 is a valuable piece of property. I'm glad you're going to get it appraised. And I hope once that's done, that council will consider the highest and best use of the land for all 13,000 of the town's residents, not just the 400 who've been writing letters about it. This is a situation that we've had all the time in committee meetings when I've been here, that the people who are most vocal for something or the people who are most vocal against it come. But there's a large, um, number of people who don't do that, uh, and yet they still deserve to be represented. I don't believe that retaining this permanently, uh, as, as open space and as a parking area for the chili and beer fest is really in the best interests of the town. I've walked over this property. There's no evidence that any wildlife or any other people have walked over it in years. It's just weeds and, uh. Okay. It's just weeds and native grasses. I think the wildlife corridors are much more likely to be along Rock Creek than across this parcel. You can tell it would actually be a great place for developing something simply from the fact that Calmonte's been built on the other side of it, and it would be no problem for a developer to do it on this side either. There's plenty of open space left between Town 15 and Community Park. There's all that area down Rock Creek. Making this, uh, open space forever would, in my, my opinion, be doing a great disservice to the town as a whole, as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Up next.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Bin Zhang. I am here to voice the support for rezoning Town 15 for open space. There is a very big distinction between the quantity of activities and life versus the quality of life. The resident of the city have spoken numerous times for the quality of the life. And you, as the representative of the resident, should reflect the aspiration and desire to continuously improve the quality of the life for all involved. Hypothetically, assuming Town 15 is valued at $100 million tomorrow, it does not change the opinion of most people. The quality of life should be preserved independent of the valuation. Regarding to Councilmember Foster talking about what if, what if, and what if, what if we want to do a library? We had that conversation before. We decided to pay a million levy to participate with the city of Louisville to share the resource. So that conversation has taken place. So you are behind on that topic. In regard to the public participation, most of us were at the open house last Thursday. We talked about all the open parcels under the current plan. What are the best use for each parcel? I'm not sure, Council Foster, if you were there or not. We were there. We were expressing our aspirations and desire for particular parcel, including partial 15. So we have been participating. We have been making our voice heard. I truly want you to listen, listen carefully, because you are elected to reflect the voices of the people and the voice, the quality of life people are looking for. Once again, I want to thank each of you for your time, effort, and commitment to continue to improve the quality of life for all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to say that I am here to support the rezoning for open space, and I really appreciate your, your time tonight and all the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, Nick?
I'm going to make this, uh, short and sweet. Hello, I'm Grace Yurkunis. I'm a resident of Andrew Drive, and I'm here vocalizing my support of rezoning Town 15 as open space. And I also want to thank you all for taking the time to be here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Judge Cody D. On behalf of Judge Achee, he has the use of time.
Granted.
Thank you. Originally, I didn't think I'd need the extra time, but, uh, clearly I, I feel the need now. Thank you for your time this evening. In the Town Council and Open Space Advisory Committee work session on April 14th, Mayor Lasas said, and you were speaking personally, not for the Town Council, quote, "If the people of the town of Superior really want Town 15 to be open space, they need to marshal their resources, their efforts, their voice, and make us make it so." And you went on to say, "But we need to hear from people, like all the time showing up at meetings, speaking during public comment, filling our inbox with something we can't ignore," end quote. Originally, I was going to thank you for doing so. I'm not thanking you now. I don't want to come off as disrespectful and rude, but tabling the discussion at the very moment that we were supposed to have the public hearing feels like the Town Council is ignoring what the hundreds of residents have been asking for, for many, many years, and very strongly the last few weeks or months. The residents of Superior and when I go through the letter that you all received months ago, uh, mid-April, actually, and we have residents signing Amherst, Riverbend, Wiley, LaSalle, Eaton, Calmonte, Hartstrong, Topaz, West Williams Street, and Original Town, Rockview, Yarra, Wildona, Clayton, El Dorado, Central Park Way, and Downtown Superior, Pitkin, Torres Peak, and of course, AAB, to name a sampling. This is an indication of what Councilmember Cowish said the constituents want and have been asking for, and contrary to kicking the can down the road. So as you wished, we've strived to be continually present and respectful with our voices, emails, and in person. We've engaged with citizens advisory committees, open houses, and you, the Town Council, and we had been feeling like we were heard by several of those parties, though the possibility or though tabling the discussion now, rather than having an open public hearing, is directly contrary to that. Hearing that you want to take a holistic look at, um, what to do with Town 15, when the only question that continues to come up is the appraisal value, one aspect is not holistic. One aspect is simply one aspect based on potentially flawed financial information that was presented by staff at the Planning Commission, which gave many Planning Commission members a wide-eyed gaping look at, wow, this is a magical thing that we can do. And I'm sorry to say, it appears that that's happening with the Town Council this evening. So again, I apologize. I'm not trying to be disrespectful. I'm just feeling a little shocked at how the rug was pulled out under our feet this evening with zero notice. And it doesn't feel very it doesn't feel as spontaneous as it would seem. Make no mistake, I recognize that requesting to have Town 15 rezoned as open space and recreation is a substantial step, but it is an imperative step so that a short-sighted irreversible mistake is not made. Unless I'm mistaken, and I could be, rezoning doesn't necessitate land acquisition. Perhaps it does, but if we rezoned Town 15 now, it costs nothing. Let me repeat that. It costs $0 to rezone. Land acquisition is another matter, and I can become better versed in that. Obviously, there is not a wide understanding about the comprehensive plan does or is or how it works. My understanding was that it was a guiding document that wasn't binding for land use decisions. However, now apparently it's a loose cycle that maybe we shouldn't be having land use discussions of any sort of any opportunity areas within the town. Is that my five or my 10? Thank you.
Keep going.
So maybe we need to make and take a strong stance about what kind of discussions we can have regarding any properties within the town if we are under a comprehensive review, comprehensive plan review process. Because apparently there's confusion about whether or not that can occur, and I, I thought we were pretty clear about that, um, last week. I'll try to wrap this up quickly. Again, my apologies. Kind of caught off guard there. The comment made that you wanted this to feel like we were still seeing that this was a process that could be trusted and reliable. I'm not so sure that we have that feeling anymore. The appraisal happened pretty quickly with that town staff number that was presented at the Planning Commission, when they saw that this was an agenda item for this Town Council meeting. So why can't a third-party appraisal? Council meeting. So why can't a third-party appraisal happen just as quickly so that we can move things along with a public hearing process? That's a pretty important consideration to take in place. And you mentioned not wanting to waste anyone's time. I don't need to comment on that. A couple more quick things, if I may. And I guess I may. If we don't rezone Town 15 proactively very, very soon, and a development plan comes along with an alluring bag of cash attached to it, without diligent examination of environmental factors, effects on wildlife and wildlife habitat, which exist in abundance on Town 15, impacts on town infrastructure and traffic, the woo-woo and wildfire implications, and consideration of community feedback gathered in the 2021 master, post-master plan survey, a myopic decision could be made, and honestly, fearfully, is likely to, and that can lead to greedy, irrevocable action. I want to wrap up with hindsight is 2020. People make mistakes. They look back on those mistakes and say, gee, I wish I hadn't done that. I hope that we are not in a position where Town Council makes a mistake and says, gee, we wish we hadn't made that mistake, constituents, but what can we do to fix it now? Once you develop a land, you can't undevelop it. If it stays undeveloped, you can always make changes later. But once it's developed, there's no going back. Prior to this evening, I had a genuine level of admiration for how this town had been engaging with its citizens. And I felt like it was my responsibility and privilege to be involved. Just like the group of neighbors that has been engaging with the community and extending far past Town 15 borders, I believe the Town Council generally is a forward-moving, proactive group that not only hears problems, but is positive in generating solutions. We missed that opportunity this evening. I hope that we get back to that opportunity again. We need a solution, and we need this Town Council to have the courage to make decisive action now to preserve Town 15 as open space and recreation. Thank you for your extended time and attention to my comments.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, I'm Amanda Vaughn. I live in Rock Creek Parkway, next to the North Pool. And I have about three points I want to make. The first, I think you've already touched on, this is a valuable piece of property. By changing it to open space, you're effectively spending that money. And regardless of how much, it's quite a bit that originally came from the general fund. And I don't think us 40 people can spend that amount of money for our entire town in a, in a meeting, any meeting, Planning Commission or Town Council. I actually think at that level, it should be on the ballot, a ballot measure, in order to switch that. That's a chunk of change. And that's my first point. My second is, is that people are saying there's been a clear, clear voice from the town about this property. That has, I have been actively, as a planning commissioner, I have been actively looking for the active voice, and it has not been clear to me. Online, people would state, yes, the river needs to be open space. And the river is not part of Town 15. People are unsure of what the area of Town 15 is. A lot of them think that that, I guess it would be eastern part, is part of Town 15. That's where the majority of the wildlife is. And that is not, that is already open space. It's already protected. The animals there are fine. A lot of people think that there would not be a wildlife corridor if Town 15 is developed, where the zoning at this point requires, even if it was zoned medium residential or some sort of high density, it still requires 40% of it to be open space. And they still require a buffer zone between the houses there. They would still create this corridor for the wildlife. That would still go in if this is developed. And I am fully supportive of that. I do not want things built right up on this house, on the, along the houses. I don't want there not to be a corridor. But I think that this is a big enough property that we can have both. And so, and then with the OSAC voting that they had in the past, where it was voted open space or undeveloped, a lot of people like to forget that the other half of that vote that people got was undeveloped. And that just means that they didn't like what they saw as far as stadiums and lights and that kind of things. It doesn't necessarily, that's not, I know I voted to kick the can because I thought this is one of the few properties the town still owns, and we're unsure of what the town's going to need in the future, if it's a library or something like that. That's valuable to the town, to have something that we can develop later when the need arises. And I don't think that vote was necessarily for open space, even though everyone loves to think it was. My third point is just my dream for that property, personal dream. I see it uniquely situated between both of our schools. I have been extremely frustrated the last three or four years after the pandemic with the after-school care availability at both schools. Right now, at Superior, or when we were trying to get our child in, when we both work and needed childcare, there were 30 spaces available. And that's a school of 500 kids. So, extreme, so I personally, and then I saw that YMCA was looking to expand, and I would love if we partnered with someone like YMCA or Boys and Girls Club and developed that for the kids, that they can both walk from both schools to that property and have after-school care and stuff like that. And I, I also think that that's very viable. Or we could just sell it, and then we could put a roof on the North Pool, which I voted for in the North Pool thing, but no one was putting a roof on it for me. So, anyway, swimmer, I love to swim around. But anyway, that's my points. And thank you so much for your time. And I support you tabling this.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name's Elle Patel. I live in Downtown Superior, and I am here to represent some of the youth. I don't want to speak for everybody. I know we all have our own voices, especially now. But I am in full support of us tabling this. I am in full support of what Mr. Serbu, you said. I agree. We shouldn't act prematurely. As a youth, I think we should think about the future. If we were to rezone this, think about the time it would take to, if we needed to put a library, think about the extra time it would take to rezone it. Again, that's just, it's, there's no reason. I'm, I'm a youth. I'm thinking about my future. I want to live in this town in the future, but I don't want to live in a town in a poor economic state. Think about the value of this land. It is valuable. Think about the annual revenue we would miss out on per year. I want this town to grow. I, I recently moved here, maybe four years ago, but I am excited to see this town grow, and I want it to grow, because I see my future here as a youth. And I think a lot of us youth do, because this is a beautiful town, especially with the downtown. I live right there. I see it developing. And I think it's amazing, all these new shops coming in, the Korean barbecue coming in. I think it's amazing. And I'm so excited to see this town develop. But I greatly think if we do rezone this to a rec, open space, that will stop, that will stop this. That's going to be a huge debt in our budget, which we all know is pretty tight annually. It's, it is tight. That's, that's the fact of the matter. And I think we will be losing valuable money that could be put into town, where all the residents would benefit. And to talk about animals, she, I'm sorry, what was her name? I didn't catch up. She was totally correct. There's not much wildlife in Town 15. The river area, there's plenty of wildlife. But this area doesn't have that much animals. I don't think it, and let's be real, animals are everywhere. We live on earth. I, I live in a, in Downtown Superior. There are bunnies, squirrels everywhere. Wildlife's everywhere. It's not that big of a problem. Obviously, I'm not for, I'm not saying kill, kill the animals, but I'm saying they have a home there. There is an area that's protected for them, dedicated to them. So I stand here and I ask you, think about our future. Think about my future, because I want to have a future here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. And thank you. Thanks for allowing me to speak. First of all, Dave, thank you for remembering our conversation. But you only remembered a very small piece. You don't, you don't remember when I mentioned to you about, why did we move out here? Why did I move from the city? Why did I move from this? I moved out here because of the quality of life, because the quality of life. And now, and now that's looking all to change. You picked up on one little piece. That's all. So anyhow, and I believe, unfortunately, I believe the same is happening with, with you folks as well. I mean, she brought up some excellent points. The fact that the entire community, or at least, I shouldn't say the entire community, because there are thousands, but you do have, you do have petitions from hundreds of people in the community that say, we don't want this. We want this, we want this as an open space. Why do you want to change it? So, again, another comment, unfortunately, Dave, that you made, and I disagree with you about wildlife, because how much time have you spent on that piece of property? I spent a ton of time on that property, and there is an abundance of wildlife there. And there, and there's also a ton of people that walk through there. I see it on a daily basis. So please, I mean, how many times have you walked, have you walked that property? I mean, it's, that's an important question, you know, to make a comment like that. Because you said it as like an absolute, and that is absolutely, that is not an absolute. Anyhow, the point of the matter is, is that the community has spoke, has spoke loudly. You've asked us to gather, to make our voices heard, to not sit around. And we've demonstrated over and over again that we don't want this developed into housing or commercial. We've given you other opportunities, along, along with open space and rec. So, I mean, please, listen to us. We are your constituents. Please. I mean, if we, personally, I already feel abandoned by government, you know, and for it to happen on a local level, it just, it's awful. And how much time that we've all put in? I mean, I understand that you all sitting here, it's a, you're putting in a tremendous amount of time. Respect for that, tremendous respect for that. But please, consider all of our time as well. And we're trying, and we're raising families at the same time, but both spouses are working. I'm sure you guys have the same thing, too. So please, respect that time. And at the same time, please respect us. Respect goes both ways. Remember that. It's not, respect is not a one-way scenario. It's two ways. Okay? So please, respect us in the same way you're asking us to respect you. Let's see, there was one more point. The quality of life, absolutely. I mean, that's, that's why I moved out here, was for the quality of life. And now, from what you're proposing, at least from what I, some of the proposals that have, that have been mentioned, would absolutely take away from that. That's about it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments.
Is that me?
Yeah, that's me. All right, cool. Thanks. I think I'm the last one, unless somebody
signed up after me. But ChatGPT tells me this is three minutes. I'll try to make it fast, okay? All right. Well, so I want to mention that we started out tonight-
Can you give your full name for the record, please?
Brian Lavash. I live in South Superior, and it's my birthday. Thank you. But you know what? I really care about this community. And instead of having a beer at Pat's right now, which is one of my favorite, I think we really need to support our community. And I think we're all neighbors here, okay? So first, I want to mention that we started this meeting on a somber note about these early community, right? We talked about divisiveness, and I think we should just take a deep breath, because this is a hot topic. And recognize, these people up here, they're our neighbors, okay? And we're all neighbors, all right? So it's not me versus them versus you and everything. We're just trying to make the best decision for our community. And we all have our own feelings, okay? I see the wheels turning. I see the strategists. I see the personalities coming out. You're banker, you're talking about the money, lawyer, architect, thinking about the, I see the strategists on this side of the room. I see the pragmatists on this side of the room, okay? So I see your views, and I understand what's going on. You all want to make the best decision for the community. So enough with that. What's my point? Okay. So basically, when you take a strategic view of the whole town, I looked at the properties, I made a speech in ChatGPT, I'm not going to read it all. But basically, Town 15's been a subject for a long time. And I think you have to understand where everybody's at in their heads as they think about this property and what we've experienced with Marshall Fire, the rebuild. There's people still hurting. There's, there's people whose houses burned down on that corner. They're, they back into that land. They've been through enough, all right? And what they want is a place to be at peace. And what I want for that parcel, whatever you do with it, is a place to unify our community. Whatever it becomes, it needs to unify our community. We don't need more roofs there in the backyards of these people. They've suffered enough, okay? There's other places we can build, all right? And I believe, I believe in being in service to our community. And I, I really think about the future of our youth. I really respect what you had to say, by the way, about wanting this place to be great a few years. That was really cool. I saw them smiling up there. I've got kids, too, and I want this town to be great for them. I want it to be affordable. The comp plan is important. I'm not really saying anything, but I, what I wanted to mention, a couple ideas, now that I have your attention, is that, is there any procedural way that we could put in a motion, you would have to do it, to change how we transfer land we already own? Because I heard the resistance. I tried to hear your point of view. Some of you, let's not make a decision until we see the big picture. That's the engineer's systematic mindset, right? And we don't want to act too fast. But, and then there's, well, what if we spend this money? Look, I know about the budget shortfalls. We need a commercial center to produce funds, and we're trying to solve it. We're also, our vision ultimately is to make everybody in this town's lives better, right? We want to be able to support the things. We want the roof on the pool. We want everything. We can't afford it. We have to find a way to afford it. We need that grant money from the state for the affordable housing. We got to build it somewhere, right? What are we going to do about it? It's a hard, hard decision for these people to solve. But is there a way that we could make a rule that says, if we already own the land, we can just transfer it? Kind of like how, you know, you, you split off a many corporation, or you absorb a corporation, and then we don't have to charge the taxpayers money for it? Think, are there any good workarounds you guys could come up with? You know, think about that in your work session, because that might allay a lot of the concerns. Other people don't want to spend the money now and commit to something until they see the big picture. And I respect that. I respect what you guys did. I don't agree with it, but I respect you, okay? It was really brave. But what I'd ask you guys to do is please go to your work session and consider what Town 15 probably won't ever be, and then decide what it should be. And I think it should be some form of open space, okay? So you guys were all wondering what I was going to say. I think there's other places. And honestly, seriously, how much has the law changed in the last 200 years in this country and stuff's happened? We can change rules, okay? So it's not ever permanent. That's all I got to say. Okay? Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm going to go see if I can make it, have a beer.
My name is Walter O'Toole, resident in Superior on Andrew Drive. I came here to voice support for the rezoning. And I don't have a ton more to add other than, you know, I was disappointed that it was tabled instead of, you know, set for public hearing at a later date. I think, you know, just hearing and hearing from others, the continuing saga of this causes a lot of stress. And I think it leads to, you know, And I think it leads to, you know, frustration and distrust in the community. So I, the only thing that I would add is, please retable this as soon as possible and try and make your decision as quickly as possible. Even though, yeah, you do need some more information from a holistic view. You could take that position in, into infinity. You know, there's always tons of factors that could come into play. So I would just hope that you all can decide what the most important factors are and just get this reopened for public hearing as, as quickly as you can. So, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, Lori Greathopper, resident of Superior. I've lived in Rock Creek for the past twenty-eight years and on Andrew for the past twenty, with a kitchen window that looks out onto Town 15. I'm not here tonight to speak about what I want. The wildlife in and around Town 15 are a precious part of our community, and they don't have a voice. So tonight, I stand before you as their voice. If they could be with us in this room, we would see great horned owls, bobcats, bats, coyotes, mice, snakes, meadow lark, birds of prey, foxes, and other species of animals that are too small to be seen. We'd also have a special guest appearance from elk and wild turkeys, yes, I've seen those. Throughout the years, I've spotted all of these animals in and around Town 15. Some searching for their next meal, others passing through from the bolder open space to the greenbelt and back again. They deserve to have a say in this matter, this is their home too, let's keep it that way. Please, listen to the wildlife, our community, your fellow neighbors, and rezone Town 15 to some sort of open space once and for all. I also urge you, I don't know how you do this, to change the comprehensive plan to reflect that this piece of land not have any residential or commercial use going forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, everyone, Mike Barnes, resident of Superior and also on the Planning Commission. And I, I mentioned that, not have things thrown at me, but more to show that I have kind of started to look at this holistically. I mean, that's kind of our role as the planning commissioners to look at this. And the process has really started, and I think as Ms. Hamerly mentioned, we really haven't had the opportunity yet to get public input, that's kind of hopefully coming up soon, so, just that. But I've started looking at it, and I fit the other gentleman-mentioned engineers wanting more information, that's me. So I've started to look at, okay, how does this all fit together holistically? And so I look at the numbers, being an engineer. So we have eighty acres of undeveloped land in the opportunity areas. So with current zoning the way it is, forty acres are available for residential development. And that forty acres assumes Town 15 stays undeveloped. So with our town code, forty percent, assuming that goes medium-density residential, so forty percent of the land has to be open space. So it leaves us twenty-four acres of land to make, to build houses on. Medium-density residential, ten to twenty homes per acre. So we're looking at two hundred and forty to four hundred and eighty homes with things the way they stand. So the question is, we've talked a lot about housing and housing needs, is this enough to meet goals for housing? I, I don't know the answer, and hence why I kind of support tabling this, because I just don't know that particular issue. You could say, okay, well gee, what if we made all eighty acres housing, you double that. You're still not looking at a real lot of homes, four eighty to maybe a thousand. So just numbers, food for thought, I don't know the answer, just throwing it out there. Clearly, this is a complex, emotional issue, difficult to figure out what to do. It seems like it cries out for a ballot measure, I realize it costs money, but kind of what we've gone through here, we've got enough residents who would have a position to put it as a ballot measure, so let's, let's do it. And on a ballot measure, just like we get with our typical ones, list the pros and cons, all the facts we know, praise values, and let the public decide, let the entire town decide who's willing to vote. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, Eric Weiner. First, I want to say thanks, Jen, for all the words you've laid out for everyone, and for all of you for listening. But I wanted to point out that this is basically completely grassroots on this side. Been living here since two thousand nine, every single time something comes up that has to do with Town 15, it's a scramble. It's all the neighbors trying to get together and talk about it, not at a meeting like this, but maybe through email, or maybe meeting down the street or at a park for a second, trying to get our neighbors to all come down, but they have kids and jobs. So you know, this isn't really representing exactly what's been going on this whole time. And it's exhausting, it's completely draining. Because it'll seem like everything's okay, let's just table it, let's not worry about it right now, let's push it down the road. And then suddenly, some developer says something to somebody, and now there's going to be a school there. But it's never on the website, it's never from you guys saying, hey, by the way, something's come up, we want to talk about Town 15. No, it's always some sort of secret under, underhanded message, chains of emails, somebody who maybe finally ran for one of the boards. It's just not clear. So sure, some of us made it down here tonight, again and again. And I'm not saying that you're wrong for wanting to get information, but we've provided this stance on our own. So don't hire people to send out some bizarre questionnaire that's going to be on the website that doesn't really address the exact thing that we're here to talk about. When we came down here, it was two thousand twelve, my neighbors and I got together, we flyer'd the entire area. Just the people who lived right along that. Calamante didn't show up, the next thing we know, Calamante was developed. People weren't expecting us to show up. We went here, we were like, yeah, well, how come you don't tell us about it, and we still showed up? It seemed to shake them up a little bit, but they were like, yeah, we don't know what we're going to do yet, so let's push it down the road again. Finally, the town says, we're going to pay for it, so the pressure's off. So you've pushed it again, and again, and again, and now you're saying the property's worth thirty million, let's just say that that's true. Let's just say that you don't table this again, and don't clarify, and put your foot down. It's going to be fifty million next year, two years from now, and that's going to be, ooh, fifty million. I got to say, also don't totally understand, and again, I'm not the most knowledgeable on this, but why are we filling every bit of space with homes? People lost their homes, their homes, there, there's still places where you haven't rebuilt a house. Why don't we focus on making sure that the community gets what they want? And if there's needs, talk about it. I can't compare us to Zahara and the others, but they're not here, we're here, again, through grassroots. I don't even know what else to say. I feel bad because of those young women who spoke about the future and the youth, and what her needs might be. But I think that also there's some perspective to be seen that there's a lot here already. And having that space is why a lot of us were here in the first place. For fifteen years, we're talking about this stuff, and yet again, people don't want to put their foot down and make a decision because they want to hear more information about, I don't know, maybe money, maybe stuff that I really don't understand. But without your help, we've still shown up. Alright, thanks.
Thanks for your comments.
Hi, my name is Sasha Greathopper. And I have lived in Superior my whole life on Andrew Drive. I also wanted to speak for the youth, but like, on the different perspective of keeping Town 15 some sort of open space. My voice may sound shaky, but that's just how I am, I'm nervous, but. Throughout the twenty years I've lived in the town of Superior, I've seen many changes take place. Most notably, the downtown Superior areas have exploded into countless houses and buildings in what used to be wide-open fields. I love to see that people want to live in this beautiful town, but part of its charm is the small neighborhood feel of it. Something I don't understand is why people want to build on any open plot of land that they have access to. I know that expansion is important for progress, but not every relatively large piece of grass needs to be jumped on and made into houses or businesses. Please, please rezone Town 15 to open space and let us breathe a little. Like, I just like, don't understand why, it's not that much land, why can't we just like, keep it open? That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Alright, turning to Zoom, David P.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
This is Dave Plady, I'm an Andrew Driver. I'm probably one of the last few original owners of a house on Andrew Drive, twenty-three thirty. December thirtieth, twenty twenty-one is still very surreal to most of us in this town. And what we've gone through since on this block in particular, from watching it burn from Hundred and Twentieth Avenue on Channel Nine that night going, is that our block? When the rest of the area was black, it was like, we come to where they bred on Monday, my God, our block burned. Three and a half years since, they're still finishing two homes down the block. This is a quality of life issue, we have gone through three and a half years of constant noise, putting up with it because we wanted our neighbors to come back, but construction starting early is some days at six-thirty in the morning through three o'clock. Don't know why they don't go eight to five, but that's what they do. And now, if you want to build something on Town 15, if that's homes, that's probably another three years of more noise. That would be seven years of constant noise, it's really disrupted our lives. I retired from CU, semi-retired from CU Athletics forty, after forty-six years. And I work mostly at home now, thanks to a vertigo issue, hi Heather, by the way. So I've listened to this constant noise, and it drives you crazy at times. We went through a year where we were told not to open our windows because the certain stuff in the air could still settle in our homes. So this is what the quality of issue of life I want to point out. And then if you build more homes there, you're going to add to traffic on McCaslin. Now, I don't know who decided way back when to put that roundabout at Indiana, excuse me, at Colton and Indiana. That roundabout should have been at Colton and Rock Creek Parkway. What happens a lot of times is you're trying to make a left from Christensen onto Rock Creek, onto McCaslin, you sit there five, ten minutes before you can do it because of the constant traffic flow, because when they remove the stoplight, the traffic just keeps on coming around the roundabout. So that's another issue, I don't know if anybody's ever thought of, unless you're making that left from Christensen. So I just wanted to point out these two issues, and the other thing I wanted to mention about the open space and the wildlife. I probably, in my time of living here thirty years, have seen a coyote or a bobcat carry a rabbit down Andrew Drive saying, thank you, coyote, you're saving our lawns.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else on Zoom like to give a public comment? Alright, seeing none, public comment is closed. Alright, thank you all for being here, for speaking on this issue. Apologize again for the surprise, but we will take this up at our work session on Monday and get more direction to the public as soon as we possibly can, so. Alright, we're going to move on to item nine, which is our executive session for purposes of discussion of a personnel matter. Not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session, any member of this body or any elected official. The appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of an elected official or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters personal to particular employees pursuant to Colorado revised statute, section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four F regarding the town manager's evaluation. We have a motion to enter executive session.
So moved.
Motion from Councilmember Foster, second from Mayor Protem Surbu, roll call vote.
Mayor Protem Surbu?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowish?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraykraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Mayor Lasas?
Yes. That passes unanimously, and Nick, you want to give your? Oh, you got nothing, okay.
And we'll have to, we've got a second Zoom link that Neil, you have to log into, and then we can get started.
Leave that meeting.
We'll see you there.
Alright, and then will you switch that over, Shannon, to?